Ron, can I open ours and then you open yours?
Yes, sir.
There you go.
Hi, I'd like to open the Deerfield Planning Board, August 26, 2013, at 7:05 in the evening here at the municipal offices on Conway Street. So this is, the planning board has five of its seven members, so we have a quorum. We have a long agenda tonight, the first being a continuation of a joint public hearing with the ZBA, so I'd like to, and then, actually then we're gonna go into minutes, public comment, we have some new business which involves two A and Rs, a zone change, a medical marijuana zoning, and a de-ict appointment, some old business, some correspondence, and then reports. So that's our agenda, and now I'd like the ZBA to open.
Yeah, I'd like to open up the zoning board of a H.O.'s meeting here located in the municipal offices on the Walters Propane Storage facility, it's a continuation, so to proceed with that.
So, was that, did everybody get correspondence over the past, since we had the last meeting, we continued it, so I know we have the, someone from Walters Propane, so do they want to come up? And then also our internal review, Pat, can you come up from Furcog? And is Jean here? Do you know if she's coming?
I don't see Jean, and I'm not sure if she's coming or not.
I think she's coming.
I don't think Jean's coming, I got an email from her saying that.
You didn't answer from her.
Not, okay.
She submitted a letter saying that all of the comments were satisfied, we still have the disagreement on the original Note 7, which is the plan use of higher pollution potential, but that's a Conservation Commission issue that we'll take up when we meet with them.
All right, so let's, why don't we do some introductions here? So Pat Smith from the Furcog is our, jointly the ZBA and the planning board have hired Pat to help us with this, to review it. Could you introduce yourself? I'm sorry, could you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, I'm Richard Stryker, Senior. I'm the, like, president of Walters Propane.
Excellent, thank you for coming.
Thanks.
Tony Wenceski, Senior Engineer with SVE Associates in Greenfield, Mass.
Excellent. All right, so where we left off, we had, we got a lot of information last month, and then we had a few questions left over, and some of them have been answered, but we want to go through them, I think, point by point. And then there was a couple other questions, I'm not sure they were all answered on the sheet, some of the questions.
No, we will have some more tonight, I'm sure.
So what should we be looking at? I think, Pat, you had, your letter was laid out.
Probably the best.
Did you guys get copies of it? I brought some extra in case.
Yeah.
And what about you folks?
We have.
You did?
That's from, this is one from Pat, right? Yeah.
Yeah, it has red, you see some red print down, because what I did was I took the old report and just added my comments to it. I apologize, this one for some reason did not print out on Litterhead, I don't know.
Then this is the one from?
We'll have to call Bill Gates about that one.
That's the one from Ty &amp; Bond, which is our peer review.
Okay. Are they not in color? It's just a different?
It's, there's a red font that shows the new information.
A little lighter, a little lighter. Ours is not red.
Yeah, so it may show a little bit, it may not be as perfect as if we're printing out in color. Basically, on the first couple pages, it just adds new information about the revised plan dates and the other additional materials that were added to the review. So substantive comments begin on page 7. The first issue is the address and the assessors' references, and that has been taken care of in the new plans, everything has got the correct non-addressed and references, the map and lot for the two properties which, portions of which comprise the single lot that they're proposing this storage facility on.
Do you have the date of the new plan? I just want to make sure we're looking at the, that we incorrect.
The date of the new plan is '09, August 13, is that correct, Tony?
That's what I had.
That is correct.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do we have it? I mean, I'm looking for the actual maps. This is May 13.
Well, look on it, open it more, because it may not have it in the bottom right-hand corner, but.
Should be down below in the middle.
It's in the middle, kind of where it shows the revision dates.
I'll flip it open, I'm sorry, I'll flip it the other way. Yep, it should say right down here.
August 13.
This is May 10.
Any new comments?
Oh, good, all right, thank you. Just so we have it, as she's mentioned, we should just double check.
So then, the next question was in regard to the delineation of the wetlands, and SVE and the applicants provided additional information such that that is addressed. They had, they referred to the first delineation, but then it was subsequently visited in the context of this review for, I believe, the Conservation Commission, and to approve the constructed wetland replication area. So that's taken care of. Moving on to page 8, loading areas, building elevations were not provided, no designated snow disposal areas, those things have been addressed, no storage areas are now on the plans, and they did provide some pictures of the existing facility so that the boards could see what that would look like. The two-inch water line and questions in C in regard to fire protection measures, the response was that they will be permitted at building permit time, it wasn't clear to me from that whether that meant that there would be no fire protection until the building went in, or it would just be further along in the process for, as you're getting permits for what you're doing here, but I think there is a, the board might be concerned that there's be fire protection provided, whether or not there is a building there, and there had been a proposal put forward by the building commissioner before that a condition be there referencing current fire code or whatever, so I just thought that that might be something that the board would want to consider putting as a condition on your site plan review report. There was also a question that had come out at the last hearing in regard to whether there would be burn-off from the tanks, so I think that was one of the questions that was sort of outstanding for the owners and proponents, and that made me very easy, but it's just something that had come up and needed an answer.
No.
Ask that right now.
There's no burn-off.
Okay, good. How about the previous?
Is there any releasing, never mind burn-off, is there any releasing?
No.
Do you release any propane into the atmosphere?
No, the main purpose, again, is to, you know, to park the trucks there, inside in the cage area, and that was it.
What was the one that she said before?
We're gonna come back to fire.
Are there any futureative emissions during that process? You know anything about futureative emissions?
No.
I know.
You don't? It's when there are emissions, unintended releases as you're, you know, filling, you know, the tanks or?
Well, we only fill the tanks at the customer's house.
Okay.
So there's no filling there.
But don't, your tanks don't get loaded?
We go to a facility to get that, to get the trucks loaded, yeah, that's done where we buy our propane from.
They're stored in the trucks. The propane is mostly stored in the trucks.
And those trucks?
That's the only place that it's.
The only place, right.
And those trucks will be full when they're parked on-site?
Well, very rarely are they full, because we deliver all day with them, and we come back at night, so.
That was the other piece in the comment on C was that we still don't really have any information about quantities, it'd be admittedly minimal, but what might be in the trucks and what might be in the tanks.
You were given in the project description quantities of the three truck sizes by gallon, and I have to go back and pull those out, but like 2,500 gallon truck, there's, you can probably just, there's three trucks.
Well, there's three trucks, one of them is the 2,400, one is 3,400, and the other one's, yeah, it's only 800, it's a small one, but generally we don't park it there, so, but the most will be stored, and this was on our original storage permit, because we had to, we originally, because we're, you know, across the street right now, so part of the fire department rulings and all that stuff to get those permits, well, all that was taken into consideration.
It's a perfect opportunity, if you haven't, to just drive over there, look at that site, and that's what will be replicated here, except in the future, there could be a potential building, which we need to show for storm drain purposes, and wanting to show the boards what the ultimate build-out would be, but, you know, we don't, we're not sure when that will be built, and that will be a building permit issue at the time that they feel they want to go ahead and construct that.
Okay, if there be no more questions there, I'll move on to E, which is in regard to the reference to, it's the requirement that there be a concrete piping of a minimum of 12 inches for the storm drainage system, by reference to the subdivision rules and regs, and they've addressed that by filing a waiver request for you, so that would be one of the things that you would need to address tonight and formally vote on that waiver request. The next item, F, is related primarily to the parking, and then the adequate room for emergency vehicles to maneuver and the bridge. So that is partially addressed, I think they've given information about the bridge crossing, if not to us, to the engineers who would have the capacity to review it.
It's submitted to the town.
And there was asserted at the last public hearing that the 70 to 80-foot width of the available space on the site should be adequate for emergency vehicles to turn around, and we just need to double check that the fire chief is comfortable with that, so that is all taken care of. The parking is still kind of an open question. It comes from the conflict between how the project was initially looked at when it came in, and what we learned more about it, and what would be the appropriate category under the parking regulations for stipulating the number of parking spaces there, whether it's retail, that had been sort of the way it was looked at initially when it came in, or whether it's warehousing and storage. And then there's the additional question of the trucks, and exactly what is the parking plan for the trucks?
At our last meeting, it became evident to us, I think some of us weren't aware, that it's just storage and then distribution, you're gonna, really, storage of the trucks, no retail there, right?
The tanks are empty that are there, that you saw pictures.
So, when it first came to us, we were looking at the use table, and I think we had put it under retail.
Yeah.
And then, and now there's another category. So I guess, Dick, can I ask you, is that, how do we move it from one category to another?
Well, originally, I think their proposal was that they would have a building involved in retail space and storage, Pat and I talked about it on several occasions, and that's how that came to be. Now, it's in a little bit different category, to be quite honest, there's a category in our zoning called Contractor's Yard that could fall under that. And we're also talking about building a building, but there's no time limit mentioned, so a little confusing.
The other one, Dick, that's there is the truck and freight terminal, because the Contractor's Yard talks specifically about building materials, and the truck one actually talks about coming in and going out, almost like cross-docking, and when you think about that, that's a little bit about, he's buying propane somewhere else, comes in, and then he goes out and distributes it. So I'm not sure if, and both of them require, both of those require a special permit in that district.
Right, so that doesn't change what we're doing here, but it has an impact on those parking requirements.
Right, so we gotta kind of figure out what does it really mean, or what is the real operation there.
And I guess just one other thing, thank you for coming, because last week, last time, absolutely no retail, no one's gonna come and fill up their small gas grill tanks there.
No, we don't even fill, we don't even fill those, even if you wanted us to.
I think, I'm glad to see you here, too, because there were questions about this. One thing, in some of the materials we saw, there were signs that indicated that there were sales of refilling of gas grill type tanks.
Where's that?
That we saw in the photographs and the materials that were brought in, so we questioned, is that gonna be going on there or not, and so that kind of threw some confusion into it about whether, without you here, you know, it was definitive, no.
That would always be no, the answer.
Okay.
So, basically, like I say, that, it's, well, right now, we're on 236, you know, the number 236, and we've been there for quite a few years, and everybody who knew where our location is now would know that, they just see our two trucks sitting there all the time.
Right.
And, you know, so, you know, it could be that some days we don't even go there, you know what I mean? It's like, because we have, we have to do other things, too, like service work and everything, and everything is done in the house, customer's house, it's not done.
Not done on-site, right.
So we have other vehicles that we do that with, service vans, and so it's.
So if and when you were to build this building, what are you gonna do in it?
Well, I would, it would be used for, you know, we, what we do now is we try to, you know, store things like we can wherever at our house, but, you know, eventually it gets to the point where we'd like to have it at that place, and I'd like to have a little workshop in the back, that's all, just so I can work on things if I had to, because otherwise we just continue on the way we're doing and working.
Yeah.
Just, you know, I live in Sunderland, so.
Are your, are your trucks that are housed here in Deerfield currently registered here in Deerfield, such that we're getting excise tax from?
Yeah, that's what you're looking for, for the excise tax?
Yes.
Yeah, it's for place of gar, you know, like, it says place of garage.
Yes, they are in Deerfield.
Yeah, I was conditioned, when I got the last permit, I believe that we had registered our trucks.
I'm aware of that.
And are you in a, are you in a purchase and sales agreement with Mr.?
Gardner.
Gardner?
What about it?
Are you in a purchase and sales agreement for that property with Mr. Gardner?
Well, yeah, if we can, yes.
You have a signed purchase and sales? A legal document?
Yeah, yes, we do.
You could provide it to the boards?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Pat, you can continue now, please.
So do we have to call what it is, or not?
We're gonna have to sooner or later figure out what it is.
Do we just do it now?
The new materials refer to it as a propane servicing business, so that's what I had picked up.
We look at it as a warehouse and storage, which the parking is very minimal, and then when you look at, you know, you can look at all the tables and everything that you want to look at, but you gotta look at physically what happens. They have four employees, probably four employees.
Three employees, but.
Three employees, and so parking really is consistent with that type of thing, but with a new development, you also have to have an ADA space, which we showed, and there's plenty of parking on the site, the trucks get parked within the fenced area.
Okay, that's important detail.
I mean, it's just, it's, usually boards are trying to eliminate parking and eliminate.
Well, that's what we're trying to do, that's why we want to get rid of the retail.
Yeah, so from a traffic standpoint, from a parking standpoint, we feel that we've got adequate design to handle that, so.
I'm ready to call it something, but who makes the official decision on what to call it? Can we do wholesale warehouse and distribution facility?
I think if you call it that, assumes that you're storing stuff on-site, that you're moving in and out, but they're not really, that's why you're.
They're gonna move tanks in and out, they're gonna move their tanks in and out.
They're moving their tanks in.
They're moving the fuel in and out with the truck.
No, no, there's empty tanks, if you've seen the white tanks, they bring them to a business or a customer, residential customer.
Yeah, we deliver the empty tank to the customer, and then we go with the truck later to fill it.
And the truck holds the fuel, which is the commodity that's transported.
And a building's gonna have office space?
No.
I mean, is it?
Shop.
A shop, it's gonna have a desk, a computer, a little place to WD-40?
Do you think the truck thing, the freight yard, and does that?
Well, I read, if I read, if I read the description of the truck terminal, it says here, "Truck terminal shall mean land or building in which freight is brought by trucks inassembled and/or stored for rerouting and reshipment, or in the semi-trailers, including tractor trailer, trailer units, or trucks, are to be parked and stored." That's where I came up with the truck, if I listen to the operation today, that's what it sounds like, and in a warehouse, too, if he has a warehouse storing some things on there, it would fit to this as well.
It does say stored for routing, yeah.
So, that's where I was coming up with the, under the use, if you go to the use table 2330 there.
And then, you're right, because the wholesale warehouse distribution shall mean a structure used primarily for storage of goods and materials, so this, we're not talking about a structure.
Well, and even the other one has a structure sooner or later.
The structure's not true.
So, truck terminal.
I mean, it requires a special permit in that zone anyways, the same as the retail did, the same as anything else is probably gonna be, but what's it best classified as is the question.
And then Contractor Yard, who should?
Contractor Yard, if you read the definition of Contractor Yard, like I said, is, well, pertaining directly to building materials.
Oh.
I wish it didn't say that, because it could be, a contractor to me could be not just building, it could be excavating, it could be anything.
This is fabrication, and, all right, all right, let's call it a truck terminal?
Dick, do you have any, you want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, I'd just like to clarify one point, no matter what you give or down there, it should include whether or not there's gonna be a building now or in the future, there's gonna be no building, it should be clarified whether or not you can have a permit in the future without coming back, or needs to be back, so you just need to go a little one step farther, that needs to be clarified.
Mr. Stryker, any ideas, what you're thinking?
The only way I understood it to be, unless I'm wrong, is that we're applying for the permit like we had for this cage and for our trucks, and the building itself, if there was a building, it was limited to the number of years that we could put it up. In other words, I understood it to be five years, if you don't put it up in five years, you're done, so I don't know if that's true or not.
Our permit, our permit would expire, I believe, in two years there, the special permit, would expire in two years.
Well, see, that kind of, you know, that kind of timing is kind of quick for us, because we're not really, at this point, planning and putting the building up, but we thought we were limited to five years.
It's a two-year, usually a permit, and you can go back for an extension. The reason why we're showing it on the plan again is for the boards to get an idea of what the ultimate build-out is. Condition the permit, that if it substantially changes in size, location, any of those things, then we understand perfectly that we would have to come back before you, but if it's the size dimension and the location on the site, we would expect that the board could give us our development permits, and that that building could be permitted through the building department or the building enforcement office, that's what we're asking for.
And with a two-year limit?
It's two years on the special permit, the only question I don't remember Pat.
One year on site plan review.
So you have to come back in one year when you went through the building, or if you went wrong back, or site plan review again, so.
Could we put a condition, Sam?
Could extend it.
Extend it, maybe to the special permit, and we could come back for an extension on that, that would be great, if you could do that.
Mr. Stryker? Rich?
So, what do we?
Only your vehicles are gonna be stored there, is that true?
Vehicles that we deliver with.
That you own or lease, or whatever they are.
Truck terminal.
That's all that's gonna be, nobody else's vehicles will be over there.
No, because that's the intent of the, putting them there, because those trucks have to be, you know, at a certain place together, so that's the place it's gonna be, just like right now, we have it across the street, so it's basically just limited to just what, the trucks and whatever requirement there was.
Okay. All right, Pat.
The next issue under H is the light pole, it provided a great amount of information on the nature of the actual lighting fixture, there still wasn't any information on the height, and they, the comment was made that, you know, the, the height of the pole is determined by the, by the service provider, however, those are fairly standard heights, and partly to allay any concerns of neighboring abutters about the overflow of the light, if there could be some idea given of where on a pole of standards you might put it.
14 to 16 feet.
That would be very helpful.
Shouldn't be any higher.
Yeah, that's typically what would, I think, be expected, so, so with that, that moves it from partially addressed to fully addressed. The next item is on, I'm sorry, yes.
Can I just, there was one sentence in here that I'd just like to clarify, as a result, when the building is going to be built, revised plans, including those details, would have to be filed, a new public hearing might be required to amend existing, that is a bit of an issue, we would like, as I mentioned earlier, that typically these wall packs with metal buildings, they're a typical setup, height above the door and all of that, if that's consistent with those, we'd like for the building enforcement officers to be able to approve this.
Sure, but they're not on the plan is the problem, if they were on the plan now, indicated in those locations. Now, it could be, I said it could require, might require a new public hearing, the board could determine that that's an administrative change that wouldn't warrant a full public hearing, but that would be a decision to be made at a later date, and I couldn't say in advance what that would be, the easiest way to solve that problem would be to show them on the plans now, and then you'd only have to come back if they moved to some radically different location, but that's up to, you know, that's up to you guys.
Well, okay, if it gets to that, we'll wait to hear what the board discusses on that, it's a.
I mean, they may decide that it's not an issue, or they may assert that it would be an administrative change, but I wasn't able to speak on their behalf in that regard. Moving on then to I, which is about operating hours and delivery times, they did provide us some additional information in regard to that, we still don't have anything specific on traffic generation and flows, we can't see what's going on in the other business, so that may, you know, we don't have to do a full, I'm not suggesting we do a full-blown traffic study, but something, you know, like it's 10 cars a day, or it's 20, or 15, you know, just a ballpark figure, so the boards have an idea, and the people in the neighboring community have as well.
Well, there's only one vehicle that would go in to get the truck and then take off, so that's one vehicle so far, and if possibly we had a good day, I'd take the other truck, so that would be two vehicles parked there.
So two in and out?
Yeah, and that would be, not at the same time, of course, because we have a regular delivery man that works for us, and he's got regular hours, and like my hours are whenever I go out and come back during the day, because we just go by, that's the way you do business, it's not like certain hours, like, you know, you just stop and say.
We're looking at an average of 10, average daily trips, and as I mentioned in the last hearing, we will be going back to Mass DOT to amend an existing access permit we have on 5 and 10, who's responsible for 5 and 10, and we'll be sending them this plan once we get approval from the boards, because they typically won't look at it until we get our local approvals, but I would say with the base of the employees that we have here from this business, it's, should not be more than 10 average daily trips per day, I mean, it's very small.
Good.
Get a, I'm sorry.
Also, I could have the police chief go over there and take a look at the driveway entrances, of what's there now, where they're gonna be coming out of for ourselves, basically take a traffic from a spot that's tougher to get out of, to put it in a better spot to get out of, and John agreed with me on that, he was, he'd be more willing to write you guys a letter, I had him go over there and check the situation out and show them what was going on.
Again, I think this was when we were thinking retail, we had more traffic questions, now that's not really a question.
It's not as big a deal, at all. The only one last thing that had come up in the course of the public hearing last time was the easement, and whether there is gonna be traffic across that easement that is anticipated on a more regular basis, and what information about that might be provided, and that was a concern.
The goal of easement is just gonna basically take away, come out of one of the driveway and come out a safer spot, again, I talked to John McCook about that, easement is just for use of my own property, it's not to buy any land around it or do anything with it, it's all APR property, it's used to access and egress my property, my property only.
Mr. Sharsky? Rich?
Yeah.
You're buying this property from Mr. Gardner.
Yeah.
Why would you want somebody else to have an easement? Why would you want somebody else to have an easement across your property?
Well, first of all, we got, you know, there, it goes up, and it goes around, back to, to his place over there, and for us, it would, it could be convenient to go out that way, too. You know, like, instead of going out toward the road, I can go around by his place and come out. So I just thought it was, I mean, doesn't seem like it would be a problem for me. I don't know, it seems to be a problem for you, but...
Well, it does, it does, and the reason being is today's the two of you are in a relationship, which is obviously for the last several years worked out well. But you change, or he changes, and the property changes.
Oh, yeah.
It's just been a, it's, we've seen this happen many, many times, the relationships are not the same.
Well, the only, the only other way that it would work is, that I could see, is not, if I didn't, if you guys weren't involved, and I, and he just released that, and we just let him use it. So then it wouldn't be an issue.
It wouldn't be an issue.
Right.
If you didn't have that there.
Not on the deed, it's not...
Right.
Well, it's on a map, recorded by the planning board.
What we're suggesting is it would have to come off of the map.
Personally, I'd be honest with you, that easement's a deal breaker for, for myself personally.
Oh, yeah, well...
Just because I've seen it too many times happen, that it becomes a problem.
Yeah, well, we, we had an original business in Hadley once, and we had this, sort of the same thing, where we...
Which stands next door, or something?
No, well, next, we used to let the farmers in the back fields go through ours place.
Right.
So, don't forget, and it went on for years, and we never had a problem. They just used to go on the outer boundary, and go out to their fields, and come back. And I think, I looked to see if there was an official thing on paper, it wasn't. I think, I don't know, back then, I guess you just shook hands.
Well, you know, that's the, that's the other option you have with, with Mr. Gardner. You guys shake hands, it's great. If the properties change, then...
Yeah.
That's another way you can handle it. But as far as a legal easement on that, I'm not a proponent of that at all.
But it is an official easement that people buying the property, it goes with the land, so if people buy it, they buy it with the understanding that the easement is there.
Yeah, but the thing you don't realize is you're asking for a special permit. And I think what Mr. Bahanos is saying, in order to get the special permit, it's a deal breaker as to whether or not that easement's there. The easement can be there, but you might not get a special permit.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just, sometimes when you do handshake agreements, that leaves open the opportunity for issues. But when you have a legal easement that's written in the deed, and it's very explicit of what that is for, it's an access easement, and it runs with the land, then that takes the issue right out of it, and becomes a legal issue if there's problems. That's all I'm saying, I'm not, I understand where, where you're coming from.
The problem comes from the fact, but you could have any number of vehicles that are going to Mr. Gardner's property, going through there any day, and you could have an awful lot of traffic, assume, you know, at some point in time. I'm not saying it's gonna happen, but it, it's a big possibility. And, you know, it's unrestricted, the use is unrestricted to that easement. If it was just for fire protection, or an emergency, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, it's restricted between the two property owners.
The other thing, Tony, with the easement, with the legal easement, it also does the same exact adverse thing. It can create the problem, because now, as I said, when the two owners, one of them flops, and I have a legal easement, I don't care what he says or he wants. I don't care that I'm throwing dust all over his trucks. I don't care that I, you know, almost ran over his dog. I got a legal easement there, and I'm going through there. And that's what happens, many, more so than I think the handshake one does. So I would, I would, I would ask that if you're gonna buy that property, I'd ask you to consider...
Yeah.
No easement there. Or you guys make a handshake. Okay, so that one's still, that one's still a little bit on the table, as a, as a partial open. Pat, you can move forward.
All right, that's really the last substantive one. Everything else we've already addressed, or refers back to things we've already commented on. So I think that, that takes care of any of my subsequent comments.
So, we, we sent the letter, or the two, we had two issues in the letter, they were both addressed in there, were they?
Well, we got our, he came to, for attendance, that's one of the things we had in the letter.
Yeah.
Which was a great thing, and again, thank you very much, because it does clarify things.
And then the specific services to be provided on site, now we're clearer, clearer about that. And then the easement. You wanna go through any other questions you guys have, or?
I have one other suggestion. You know, with all, with the easements, and the site where the proposed buildings are gonna be, and everything else, would it be in order to take a site visit, and have to see the stakes in the ground as to where this stuff is, so we get a better perspective? You know, and so we can see the delineation of what the proposed right-of-way is, where the building is gonna be, with the stakes in there, where the propane trucks are gonna be stored? You know, it, it's up to everybody else. I don't, just saying, you might get a, people might get a better perspective of what's happened.
My belief is, Tony's done an exceptional job.
Oh, yeah.
Again, with the presentation and the plans.
I think the issue of the easement is something we should just discuss, but the, actually the clarity of the plan is, you know, other than, say, seeing where the lights are, and that specificity, which would be nice, but it's not... It's a very minor detail in a complex plan. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I mean, just, I think that in, in the main, we can kind of see the project, we're just thinking now about these, these things that are sticking points.
Are you okay with that, Rob? Are you okay with that, Robert?
I didn't hear what she said.
She said, we're, we're kind of all satisfied that the plans and the presentations are pretty good.
So a big question is, do we take, can you take the easement off of that plan?
Well, why can't we leave it there for reuse, as long as I own the property, Mr. Striker also owns the property?
And it goes with the property, Greg.
Then it goes with, yeah, yeah.
And it's like a handshake, so just do the handshake instead. I was also curious, that you said you could drive your trucks over his property, that's based on a handshake, I guess, because that's not any easement. So, you know, why not do it both ways?
That's the way you're gonna have it, that's the way it's gonna be, I guess, I don't...
It's a proposed easement on the plan, so we don't really have to take it off the plan, but in the sale, it doesn't re...
So just the clarity, Tony, that you're, that you're...
Well, we'll come, we'll have to come back before the board renew A&R plan, and spend the money to revise that plan and record another plan. If, where you condition it that the sale of the property would furnish you with a deed that no re, no easement was reserved over that property, then it's not there. Or however you want to do it. If you want us to do that, I guess, Greg, I'll spend the money to have the survey removed from the plan, and we'll pay another recording fee for that plan at the regis...
Yeah, it's just, so that I paid, and I put it on there, support it, now I gotta take it back off, I mean, if that's what you're gonna do then...
However you feel comfortable with it, we'll, we'll do with that.
Well, again, you came for the A&R first, and said, we could've done it all at once, maybe, and this would've come up in that discussion.
I think we were, well, where it was going on at the time, I think we explained it at the meeting, as far as Walter's propane going in there, and that's why we moved a lot line, and easement, everything was well spoken out, I'm sure.
I think the clarity of the project, Greg, is clear. The clarity of the project is, is, you know, now that we've got the retail issue solved, which was big, and I think on the...
Well, it was never, ever intended to be retail.
But we saw a building, and we never really, so that, that's good, I mean, I think...
We never applied for retail.
Yep, yep.
I mean, so that shouldn't really even be...
And even be an issue, but the thing is, I think we see the project as it is, I think that the issue, and I think Mr. Bahanos puts a very good point, that the issue of the easement isn't your problem, it's gonna be this, and it's not even gonna be our problem, it's gonna be our successor's problems, you know? It's gonna be the people who sit here, and the next generation, that's the tough thing. And I think you can see it both ways, both for the clarity of it, yay, everybody knows what's the deal, but also the second generation of an easement like that can be very complicated for our board. In terms of reviewing the A&R, when the board reviews A&Rs, they look at only basically the frontage, they're not looking at what the proposals are for the use of the property, that wouldn't be an appropriate review, so that wouldn't have come up in the course of that conversation, wouldn't have been relevant to their, to their decision on that. But if it went with the property, if the easement went with the, the sale of the property, then that, that clarity is there for the current owners, and does it, can it, but you still have to re-assess, you'd have to still redeed it, is that what you're saying, Tony?
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
If, if the issue is that the easement exists for this, this pairing of property owners, right? That's the easement, but if you created a new deed, it would still just be issuing a new deed, that, that easement then was dissolved with the next generation of property owners?
Well, typically these will run with the land, so...
Yeah, exactly, that's what I'm saying.
So, say Greg sold his property to somebody, he would still have rights over Walter's propane site, that's typically how that works. And, unless they wanted to relinquish that right at some point. But it runs with the land, and...
Right.
And it's a private easement, it's between two private entities, that's not to say the boards don't get involved, or the police, or whatever.
Right.
Understood, but it's a private easement between two private entities, unlike on a private land development project, say a private road, that they grant an access easement for the town for sewer water purposes, then the town, then that's a public-private easement. Those are all different things. This is between two private entities, but I understand what you're, what you're asking for.
No, many, many utility companies, I mean, Womiko uses as an example, or Northeast Utilities, they've got easements in places that you can't even imagine, that's crossed everybody's property. I just, you know, I don't want to reiterate it again, but it is a, I've just seen in this town, I've already seen on this board, half a dozen times that this has become a major issue. And I can recite...
Wipe it off, we're done with it.
Very.
So, they'll, they'll remove it then, so that issue goes away.
So the only other one, the fire protection, that comes back to that, whether...
Yeah, I can address that, I'm Bill Swayze, I'm the fire chief.
Oh, yeah.
There is no fire suppression system required for the outside storage of the trucks or the tanks. All that's required from the fire marshal's office is that there's secured storage around it with a six-foot-high chain-link fence. They were to build a building, it would fall under the building inspector and the permit at that time, you know, and they'd have to, they'd have to put the fire protection based on the building code at that time, so...
And Bill, they could, they could, but can they put portable fire protection there, even if they didn't have water, or, you know?
They could, they could put an ancil system or something like that, with, you know, something, yep. If they wanted to do it. Right now, you know, based on the project, you know, they're picking up what they have on one side of the road, moving it to the other side of the road, hasn't been required there, you know, we're not gonna require it here. Six-foot-high fence, placarded on all four sides, secured 24 hours a day. That's all that's required by the fire marshal's office.
Thanks very much. Is that, do you have any other questions, Dick, about...
Yeah, I only have one comment. I need you to clarify the two-year timeframe. By that, I mean, does he need an occupancy permit for the two years expires to come back? Or does he need a building permit to carry him over beyond the two years? In other words, if he takes out the permit, one year and 11 months, it's gonna take him six months to build a building, is that gonna be okay with you guys? Or does the building have to be completed within the two years? And that's a decision you, you guys have to stipulate.
It's substantial...
And the other thing was, were they gonna have an extension available?
For the business...
Is that what you were asking for?
I think by law, by regulation in the town, you have the right for an extension. I don't have my book with me. We would request building permit, be pulled within two years, we'd make the site plan, be consistent with the special permit, because that'll make it easier for you, it'll make it easier for him, and, and depending on economics, we may come back and ask for, request an extension.
So then, just for my clarification, if they pull a building permit, how long do they have to complete?
It's got to be six months.
To show, they have to show progress in substantial...
Substantial use thereof must be shown for a site plan, so just even pulling the building permit, you guys could in your discretion deem substantial.
But no, I mean, that sounds like it's fine, if it's, it's two years, get the building permit, then six months, and keep an eye on it.
And weather permitting.
And that's the same as the special permit?
I believe it's, it's the similar language, just...
It's the, uh, building permit?
Yeah, well, it's gonna be two years, and it's gonna have some kind of...
Making progress.
They're making progress, yeah. And it's probably gonna be more than just pulling a permit, it'll be showing some progress, showing some investment.
Progress will be very quickly, because we're gonna try to move Walter's propane to this site as quickly as we can, so that substantial process, he'll be operating there as soon as we can...
No, but then we're talking about the building.
They're talking about the building as a separate thing, but even still, that can all be considered as part of that decision.
So building permit is a, is a, is a good threshold.
So how do, usually we put conditions, this is almost like a, like saying you have more than what we normally give. So where do we, how do we write that?
Well, you mean, in terms of the period of it?
Yeah, extending it from one year to two.
Yeah, I think we'll just, we'll put that in as sort of a condition.
Add it to, yeah.
Yeah, it'll be added to it.
Okay.
I think the state already has an effect permit, I mean, just because of those slow times, they've already extended them.
They have, yes.
Yeah, I mean, even like the DEP has extended for wetlands.
Been extended by four years for most of them, but I have to double-check...
Right.
What the deadlines for those extensions are.
I think they're three years.
There's an end spacer, if that's still in place, I'll have to double-check that. But you are correct, that there is a, a permit extension act.
Maybe you'll use that permit extension guideline on this, just as something to go by.
We'll look at that.
All right, any other questions on the planning board?
I just want to make sure we get this right here in the minutes, that's all.
Mr. Striker?
What will happen, it'll be, there'll be a two-year special permit with the requirement to have pulled a building permit with the right to extend the permit by...
I don't know if we even need to specify the requirement of the building permit necessarily. We can, we can, we can look at that language and see what you guys think, I can draft it either way, but just, it'll be noted in the minutes that there was a discussion about that as being, you know, substantial use, unless you guys want that stipulated in the conditions, that a building permit would qualify as substantial use, and you were saying that it would be actually required.
Well, I don't know, that's what I'm just trying to figure out.
If they were to buy, take a building permit, it's only gonna extend it six months. So if they take a building permit and they don't make movement on the building permit...
The building permit will go away.
The building commissioner's gonna say...
Yeah. So what is the extension you're seeking then? What...
I'm not, we're not...
Well, I understood you wanted a two-year permit with...
We just want to bring the permits all online, so we were going to see if the planning board...
I understood that, but then it sounded like you wanted to have the option of extending it if need be.
I think the regulations give us that opportunity.
Upon written request. All they have to do is a written request, and then they can be extended beyond those initial two years.
I'm just asking the condition that the site plan be consistent, that the permit length be consistent with the special permit, that's it.
Mr. Striker, you're, you're, I'm assuming that you're kind of like waiting until you get all the permitting, and that's when you're gonna execute the purchase and sales?
Yeah.
Or do you have a time in mind when you're gonna execute your purchase and sale?
Well, one of the main reasons we need to get it in, because we need to put the fence up before winter, because, you know, it's gonna be kind of tough doing it.
But when, when will you buy this property?
Well, as soon as, as soon as.
Soon as the appeal period is gone. Soon as, soon as we can give you the okay.
Yeah, right, because we already got, we already, you know, we already gotta get the fence company involved, and you gotta do all this stuff, and then what the end result will be, of course, will be parking our two trucks here.
We have to go before the Conservation Commission, yeah, to get final order conditions on this. We have to go to the Select Port to get the amended license, we have to go to Mass DOT to just amend our original...
Can you bring that before the fire chief, correct, as well, for another permit?
We have to get an updated license for that, that'll, that can go pretty quick.
All right.
So we have those things to do, yeah.
Whenever we're ready, I do want to just find out if there's any public comment.
That's right, I'm ready for that, I'm ready for that now, too.
If you do that, we'll take it at the same time.
All right, anybody, any public comments on this project? I don't hear any.
Then generally, we close and then we do a little deliberating, and, uh, and we can, when I, not close, actually, but we...
Well, that's what I want, I, I need to kind of double-check, do we need to continue our hearing or not?
You can close the public portion of it, I guess, but keep it open.
Oh, absolutely.
Because if you're going to be doing new, to take the easement off, we're going to be getting some different plans, things like that.
Right, we can't, we're not ready to sign this.
You need to be able to accept those, and if the public hearing has completely been closed, then you can't do that, so you don't want to put yourselves in that position.
No, we just close public comment.
Yeah, we would ask that you close the public, and we'd ask you to just condition the permit that the easement will be removed, and we'd like to finish it. We'd like to finish tonight, so we don't have to pay Doug and I to come back again to another hearing or continue this. I mean, if we're, if we have agreed to, um, the contents, we'd like to get a decision.
So making a contingent on, so you make the...
You make the permit, you, you put the stipulations on it, we, anytime you guys put something, we always back it with, with our, uh, when we issue the permits, and they have to abide by what it is, otherwise, they won't be able to give, the building commissioner won't give them approval.
We'd like not to continue and come back again.
So I don't know what process your board typically follows. John and I spoke earlier about the process that we've been instituting here, which is that, um, once the board has begun, closed the public portion and begun its deliberations, so that we have some notion of what the conditions are that they want to add in, and we have a good list started here, um, then I would go back and draft that, and I would bring them on paper, draft for their review, so that they could have looked at it ahead, make any comments, we can make any changes, and then vote it with something in front of them, rather than just some...
We generally would just come up with the conditions, we, we're recording them here as we speak, and then we would take a vote of whether we would give them or get not. Then what happens is they get typed up and then we sign them, is, is what we generally, that's how we generally do it. We wouldn't come back with them in front of us.
So in either case, they would have to come back to you for the signature?
We would grant it tonight, if we granted it, if we chose to grant it. We'd choose to grant it tonight, and then Pat would type up our conditions, and the 21-day appeal period would start to, the clock would start to tick, and in the meantime, we'd sign, we'd sign the conditions.
All right, well, we're going to have, we have a little bit of an issue, because the site plan review report has to be done first, so that any conditions they have can be included, as you said.
Well, I mean, from my perspective, I mean, I'm willing to vote and do our process, and if you guys want to come back, you can come back to vote for yours, I mean...
But the problem is, if they, if they have something different that has to be included in, in your permit, then you've already approved the permit without that.
Well, that's why we usually go sequentially, but...
Well, that's, yeah, that's why the, the site plan review is supposed to go first.
I mean, let me ask you this, if we draft the stuff, I know you got, you might have to come back one more time, I don't want to come back.
I don't want to come back.
It also gives the applicants the opportunity to review those conditions and have any input into them if they feel that, you know, changes need to be made.
If they're not four pages long, and they're like a few conditions, we could do them right now, I would think.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've talked about the three or four. We just don't, I know sometimes we've done it on scribble, and then the week later, it's like, oh, what did we agree to? So that's kind of why we like to take a couple of days, type it up, look at what we talked about.
Well, what haven't we done about the site plan review already?
Nothing, this, this is it, that was just the conditions.
So I think if we all agree on the conditions, can't we, can't we finalize it tonight or not?
It's all lined up.
Um, good.
Yeah.
All right. Dick has a comment.
The, the UDA can vote for or against to do projects, and they can put a condition on it that it's subject to whatever the planning board votes in, you know, whatever, to follow the recommendations of the planning board. You could vote to do that, Ron, that it's subject to following the planning board recommendations.
I'm not sure if you can condition on the actions of a third party. It would be better if we were able to do it, and while I, I don't like the process of just sort of hashing it out on paper, it would be better, I think, to do it that way here tonight, than to have it back, done backwards, with you referring to something you hadn't seen. You know, you might want to have input on this.
Right.
One second.
We're just trying to figure out our mechanics here right now.
All right, but I think the first thing is, we're all comfortable with public comment? We can close that?
Sure, and then we can deliberate as a group.
Yeah, all right, so I'd like to close the, uh, public hearing for the Walters Propane...
The public comment.
Public comment.
Of, yeah, leave the public hearing open, but close down the public comment period now, so you guys can just deliberate amongst yourselves, and nobody will any longer have the right to intervene, other than the applicants and their comments.
All right, I'm, I'm not clear then on the difference between public comment and public hearing is.
The, the hearing is our hearing.
Still, but that's our...
We're open.
Yeah.
All we're saying is we're not going to hear.
I wouldn't even vote it, you could just say, "The public comment period is closed now," and that'll be reflected in the minutes at this time.
Strike what I said before, the public here, the comment period is closed for the planning board.
And you guys, you can return to your other seats if you want.
Yeah, that'll make it easier for us.
Full session.
Oh, I need your input there.
Yeah, we'll wait.
This is for, this is for all of us, I mean, I really think that, a couple of things, one is the, um, I think it really is a, a truck, storage yard, whatever it is, I, I don't see it as a retail, and when I think about retail, it's not retail, so I think it is a storage area that they have. Again, I think that Tony's done an exceptional job of presenting all of the things.
Terminal.
I do see that, I personally see, I don't see this as a big impact, I don't see this as a high impact. I was concerned about the, the easement because of the future stuff, so I am strong on the easement, that the easement, there's no easement there. If they want to have a handshake, they can have a handshake, but then when something happens, we're not involved as a, as a town, and so forth. So, I think from our board, I, I could move on this tonight, if, if you want to, but we'll...
Can I ask a question, Ron? Is the special permit that we grant to Walters Propane, does that go with the property, or would a new property owner have to apply for a special permit?
It is only for Mr. Schrecker, Schrecker, that's with a special permit. If we were voting a variance, then it would go with the, it would go with the property.
I think it actually could go with the property, it just, it depends on how you specify it, whether it is to him specifically, or whether it would go with the property, you guys can determine.
And technically, we can also, if we wanted to, and I'm not seeing the need to, is, we could put a time limit where he would have to come back for just a, a check-in on the special permit, but...
If his business had grown, or if...
Well, not even that, even if, if we, if we didn't know them, and we, he's been there, like you said, for years running, I mean, they've been transparent, right, over there, so we haven't seen or had problems with certain things, but if he was a guy that we saw problems with, we could say, "Okay, we're going to give you the permit, but you come back in a year, and we're going to check, check you." So we can, we can do that as well, but I don't see that necessary at, at this point. And I, I don't know what else. Any other, any other thoughts? Robert, any other thoughts?
No, I just, uh, I think that we shouldn't restrict it just to Mr. Schrecker, because I know he's got family involved in the business. He's probably going to have a corporation at some point if he doesn't already have one. We're going to make sure that we don't hem him in.
Well, we could do it to him or his, uh, his siblings, or something like that.
To the business?
To the business, it sounds nice.
You know, but I don't have a problem as long as that, that right-of-way is out of there. I think it's probably for the, a good, good project and what have you, and I just wouldn't want to vote it with the open, then use of that right-of-way.
Okay.
Other than that, the conditions and what have you, per the plans, and the stuff that was outlined in the review, you know?
All right, I think we can take two minutes to deliberate here, and see if, so, any issues with those things? The other thing I want to make sure is that we will grant, can we waive this technical compliance for the stormwater?
Yes, but you need to have a vote to do that.
Do we have an official letter?
Yes, there was an official letter.
I have a question for our board. We don't have a quorum, because two of us weren't here for the first part, and there's only two people here.
Oh, there, you do have a point.
Uh, not, two of us weren't here for the first part.
Did you listen in to the, or review the videotape?
Minutes, did you look at minutes, did you do any research?
So I believe we can vote.
It has to be actually a transcript or the video.
That's fine, we'll vote, they can abstain, and we still have a, but we have a quorum, so we can't vote.
How many people do you have who can vote? Just the three of you?
Yes.
Don't you need four?
We have five voting, but two are going to abstain.
For site plan review, it's probably less, it's not as clear a requirement on the quorum as it is for you for a special permit, so I...
We're four and one, or, or four total?
Yeah, so I think because it's site plan and not you sitting as a board doing a special permit or something else, you can get away with it. Any attorneys in the room that know differently, we'd love to hear from them.
So the, um, I guess, I just, my other question is this, this burn-off thing, it just, how do, how do we, do we, do we put that in somewhere?
That there's no burn-off.
That you're not going to do it, but I just, four years from now, I don't want burn-off to be happening, and...
That's a good thing, John, you're right. Or, or just off-gassing.
No off-gassing.
As you said, the fugitive error there.
And that doesn't bother you, but it just kind of, it's kind of...
Now, we don't do, we don't, first of all, we never did that, and never will.
We don't waste your fuel.
Well, it seems, it seems like a waste of fuel, to me it does, too, when I see those,
you see those torches going. It's actually a pretty expensive process, just for the equipment, too, so it's like, I don't know why...
Yeah, and then, um, and then the light being 14 to 16 feet, we just put that...
Right, and, and state the, you know, reference, the spec sheets that they gave.
And then if, um, so then how do we also put about this if the size and shape of the building changes, or something, so we're not just approving any building?
And I've always have the first condition, just say that everything will be constructed according to the site plans, and so then if anything changes from that, they have to come back.
And then, as you said, whatever tonight's date was on this plan.
Right. Problem is, this plan's still going to have the easement on it.
Okay.
So we're going to have full references in all the permits to a plant that is not the final plan, because he's going to do it without the easement.
You can condition that I will resubmit a plan that does not show the easement. I'll just get it to you, that's all.
It's going to give us as-built plans.
Well, it's got to be, it's got to be before as-built, though, really.
Just condition that we'll, we'll resubmit plans that remove the easement.
And then as a truck terminal, we don't even have to talk about parking now, right? Because it's, it's fine? Do you know what the, uh, number of parking spaces is for?
Well, we could go with what, what they approved under the...
The retail.
The retail obviously ends you up with too many.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay.
That's why we want to, because they show four, I think, are parking spaces.
Right, so...
First of all, you know, there is no, no real issue with that, because when we take a vehicle out of the cage, we usually put the vehicle we came with inside the cage.
So it's a trade-off, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, because we, it's just that it's secured, so it's like, there's no real parking.
Oh, and those, we didn't even count as parking space. You accounted parking spaces next to the...
Building.
Yeah, I didn't know they put the private vehicles in the area.
So you have more than...
Yeah, so the industrial use only requires the one per 500 square feet, and now that we've switched it to, I don't know, an understanding of it being an industrial use, you guys could just go with what's on the plans, I think.
So that's what, that's what I have.
I like it.
So now we need a motion for the waiver, in a second, right?
Did you guys find that letter?
I didn't.
You didn't have to bring an extra copy of that, Tony, I know, I've seen it. I think I have it, here it is.
You have a copy, but I don't have an extra.
Here's a copy of the waiver request right there.
We also need to get, um, can we pass around a signing sheet?
There is a sign-in sheet that's going around the crowd. If you haven't signed it, make sure you do, and then we need to get it to the table up here, so that everyone up here signs it as well.
Did you get it?
No, I don't have it.
Oh, you want to read that?
Yes, as, as discussed at the pub, at the public hearing, um, on August 5th, 2013, on behalf of our client Walters Propane, we request the town planning board, grant a waiver allowing the use of high-density polyethylene HDPE storm drain pipe in lieu of reinforced concrete pipe as required per the town subdivision regulations.
Can we move to accept that?
I move to accept that.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
And who...
Okay, so it's three, it's three, three zero two.
Okay, if you guys aren't voting on it, and you can't participate in the discussion either.
So it'll be three zero two?
Can't vote, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, three zero two, so who's, who's the, who's the move?
Rachel moved it.
No, no, John moved it, John moved it, and Max seconded it.
Max seconded it.
Okay, John, I thought Rachel did, okay.
Yeah, but we had to change it, because she can't vote.
Okay, she took it back, okay.
I can't vote.
So, were you at the last meeting? So women, now, then it's not, it's not three zero two, it's three, two zero three.
They're abstaining. Two in favor, yeah.
Two, zero, three, right?
No, three in favor. One, two, all the three guys are in favor.
Oh, Max was here? Okay, all right, I got you, sorry.
So they're abstaining.
I thought Max was saying he wasn't.
No negatives to extensions.
So that executes the waiver, and that can be indicated in the review as well, that that waiver has been duly voted here tonight, so that would be part of the site plan review report that they would submit, so I can carry over into whatever you're doing as well. So what I have now is just the general, everything according to the plans, resubmit without the easement, no off-gassing, no fugitive emissions, reference the spec sheets and the height for the light fixture, the waiver request, stop me if you don't agree, and then I usually put a blanket, you know, "We'll comply with all local state..."
And from our perspective, the special permit is to Mr. Sharsky, uh, Sharsky, I'm sorry.
Schrecker, sorry.
Schrecker and his heirs.
At that location, or could he move it to another location?
At that location.
Okay.
His heirs, not, not the business, because if we do it to the business, somebody else can buy the business.
That's true.
Interesting. So you wanted to go to his heirs? So it's very specific to his family at that location?
That's correct.
Site plan consistency of the special permit.
Right, we're going to, the expansion of the, we were discussing that off-site here, so thank you. We need to add to that also, that the SPR is extended to match the term of the special permit. To the two years.
SPR, that's them, we are S-N-R.
SPR, site plan review.
I just want to say, it's nice, it's helpful to hear your board's perspective, and as a board, I think it's been really useful to do this together. I think, I know it streamlines it for you, but I think for us to hear your input and how you see it is really helpful.
Thank you.
We definitely appreciate it.
All right, so those are the individual conditions read out now. It's up to the board to determine if you want to vote those as a group as read, or if you prefer to vote them condition by condition. Lots of times, planning, planning boards for special permits will vote them individually, is that how you indicated?
We would just, we would just read them all and then vote.
As a group.
And vote as a one.
So it's up to you as a, how you...
I'd like to do them as a group.
Okay.
Unless there's any objection. You go through them one more time?
Okay. General provision that everything will be constructed according to the plans, and they will resubmit without the easement. No off-gassing, no fugitive emissions, second. Third, we'll reference the spec sheets and the height of the light. Fourth is that the waiver request has been approved, and fifth is that the SPR is extended to match the term of the special permit, which would be two years.
And we're granting a special permit for a...
Well, I'm going to be writing up just their site plan review report. I don't know, I mean, I certainly could help with Pat or with you, if you want.
I just want to make sure you know that we're voting on...
Bus, truck, freight terminal.
Terminal, yeah.
Truck terminal.
No retail.
Right. Should we put that in as a condition, that there will be no retail at the site?
Well, or, or we call it, this new thing can't...
Bus, truck, freight terminal. That's the, that's the...
Ready?
That might be something more appropriate for yours, in any case, you might want to add that in specifically there, if that is of concern, that there be very clear prohibition of that going forward.
And then we don't put anything, do we need to put anything about the easement in ours, or?
We're going to just refer to the, in regard to the plans, that they will be, it'll be removed from the plans.
Okay.
Okay.
They can go into more detail on it, if they do.
Ours is going to say no easement in the condition of the sales.
All right.
So your first condition, and it's our building permit and all of that.
Just delete according to the plans, you know, and then, so then, then it's a question, should it change? Can come back to the board, and they determine if it's substantial enough to require a public hearing, maybe administrative.
Is Dick okay with that?
Is Dick okay with that? He's nodding his head.
So do we have a motion to approve the site plan with those conditions just read?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstained.
Three zero two.
All right, we got, do you want to make a motion?
I make a motion and we do what she said.
With the, with, with our conditions.
Now you're catching on.
One second.
Second.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
And myself, as well.
Do we record those decisions, you prepare them in those calls when we're ready?
We'll prepare them and then you are responsible for recording them. What I'll do is I'll do, I'll do the site plan review report by the end of the week. I'll flip it by a couple of you for your review. Certainly John and Paul, because you're the ones that will be keeping the notes.
Yeah.
And then I'll get it out to you as soon as they've approved it, so you can just incorporate our version.
Thank you.
Pat in our office, in Dick's office, takes care of our paperwork.
And we'll get them recorded and. Thank you very much.
And then we'll, actually, we don't have to, we don't sign this plan. It's not like an A&R.
He'll sign the site plan review report.
Right.
They'll sign.
He's probably gonna bring you an A&R without, right away.
Ultimately, they would probably be bringing it in.
You're exactly right. Along with plans, we will bring you a revised out with it removed, but we also get to get you an A&R with it removed so that you can sign that. So we'll try to get on your next meeting so that we can then record that plan.
Of course, the special permit, you know, there is a 20-day appeal period, as you said, so it won't get fully recorded until that appeal period is up. But as you do know, you can begin, once they have filed it, you can begin work on it, you're just, you're just in the position where should someone file, you know, an appeal that was detrimental, you'd have to take out anything you did. But since, you know, the public seemed not to be in opposition to it, you're probably in a good position if you need to start it on that fence to do that. Once the permits have been, and you've got 14 days from your vote now to file their written permit, so it's up to Pat, you know, on her timeframe for all that, but you'll be notified as soon as they're ready.
Yeah, we've got to work on the plans, plus we've got those other permits. Does this allow us to go forward to the decision now that we've got this even though we don't have the final decision?
I would wait till I had it signed in my hand. You can go ahead and go back to them and tell them you can start scheduling, see what schedule works out.
Where did you want to go, Tony?
Well, I've got to go to the select board.
Yeah.
I would pursue.
Concon.
Got to go to the fire department, too. We'll just wait until we get the decision.
They need this week, so otherwise it'll be two more weeks.
Yeah, it'll probably be two weeks then. Thank you all very much, we appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks for all your hard work, guys.
Thanks for everybody coming, it's helpful. Thanks, Greg.
Do we got anything else, Ryan? No, we just got some more hearings coming up.
Everybody have signed this before you guys go, you all signed it?
Yep.
Everybody present here, yes, good.
This is yours, eh?
Yes.
Hey, we're gone, John.
You're done? We're gonna throw marijuana soon if you guys want to.
Help us, please.
If you could come back and bring some, that'd be helpful.
Not to you forgetting you anyway.
Sure, Pat.
Thank you very much, it was lovely to meet you. Hopefully get a chance to do it again.
All right, we're gonna switch the agenda just quickly and make, bring up the zone change per Veer Land to the top of, to the next.
Next piece.
I've got here a couple hours, I didn't want to do, I gotta go.
Bye, Lynn. All right, let me find this letter that I'm trying to.
There's two.
I can't get on the email letters.
So what's, what's the next topic we're doing?
Per Veer. Uh, he's the attorney representing the clients, Don Dubendorf. He was the author of the letter, yeah.
We're, we're continuing.
Yep.
Don.
All right, on, um.
Dubendorf.
D-U. Yeah. E-N-D-O-R. I should just sit next to you all the time, Paul.
Yes, yes.
And so usually I ask me these questions and I'm useless, so.
On August 5th, we received a.
It was weird, I was like, there's not sitting in their regular places today. Well, so Max, that's almost kicked me out.
All right.
This is gonna be my new spot.
Well, on August 5th, the planning board received a letter. Dear members of the planning board, after receipt of a request on July 25th, 2013 by Attorney Donald Dubendorf on behalf of Joyce Purveer to change the zoning of the parcel of land on North Main Street, map 151 lot 1, the Board of Selectmen formally forward this issue to the planning board for review. A copy of the letter and sample warrant article are attached. Sincerely, Casey Warren, Executive Assistant for the Town of Deerfield. Aye. Mr. Dubendorf, thank you for coming.
Thank you for, for putting me on the agenda.
Well, it's like we're told this we have. But anyway, you're welcome.
After Pat looked at the warrant, there was a correction of the RA district into the CVRD district, so the letter that you got from the selectman was updated to reflect that change after Pat's. Yeah, Pat's input. What we're asking for is a zone, an amendment to the zoning bylaw to allow this to be all industrial as opposed to a split lot, and the process starts with the selectman. It then comes here, you set a public hearing, you hold a public hearing on it where you hear pros and cons, you then make a report, or you don't make a report to the town meeting. If you don't make a report, we have to wait 21 days for the town meeting to occur, and then it goes to the town meeting for a two-thirds vote. That's the process. So this is just one step in that and it's, we're asking for you to set a date for a public hearing so we could.
Move forward.
Move forward in that process.
So I, that's my understanding, what was just described. So if we can hold that for a second, let me step back, there, the next, one of the next agenda items tonight might also require a.
Hearing.
And so what I'd like to look at is, are these things that could be done on the same evening and then like a day?
I did one of our backward timelines that you guys have seen before for this one, and it'll apply to both of them, so I'm gonna go ahead and pass that out to you. Here's one for you.
Thank you, Pat.
This is the updated one after the.
This is the updated one, because when I had talked to Wendy Foxman last week, she had indicated that they're looking to do a special town meeting, there are a number of matters before the town they want to bring. Dick, you may know more about all the other things that are, that are potentially on the agenda or the warrant, so they were talking then about the second or third week, or, or third or fourth week in September, which really put you in a bind of needing to call at least one, if not two, special meetings in order to be able to meet their timeline. So then Wendy got back to us after I'd sent that out to her and to John and said now they're actually looking at second, first or second week in October. And he had not specified the exact date, so given that, it seemed like it made sense to, for you guys, and I've put that here, number six, you're, you could set your public hearing for the date of what would be your next regularly scheduled meeting. That'd be a full week if they were to hold the town meeting on the 14th, if they could do that, you know, to accommodate your schedule, and that would give you a little bit of extra time to deal with. This matter is straightforward and can, you know, could be, you know, the legal notices could go out pronto, we just need maybe one more thing, the map that we had talked about so that folks would know where, the public would know what was being discussed, but otherwise, this is very straightforward and move out. The other matter is not, and would, if you did want to get that on to.
Double it up, would you want to?
You would need a little bit more time.
Yeah.
And even then, when we get into it, we'll see, we might need an extra meeting, but.
Okay.
This would have notices, you know us, abundance of caution, we don't set the date for the publication of first, we don't know, because on that drop-dead date of 14 days, we do 21 days.
Yep.
If possible, we could squeeze it back a little bit, but we never do it on the drop-dead date because, you know, God forbid, you never know what's gonna happen and then it doesn't get in the paper and then your whole schedule is shot, and especially where the town is so concerned to move things along, we don't want that to happen. So that's what, this is based on that with the.
14th is Columbus Day.
It's, it's still coming up quickly, that would have the notice of public hearings go in on the 16th and the 23rd, and those notices, just for your information and for the board, they have to go into the newspaper two days in advance for them to get published, so that adds another.
So I propose we schedule a public hearing on October 7th, Monday evening.
Okay.
What, what date again?
7th.
October 7th, and that could be.
October the 7th, okay.
First agenda item in case we have other business, so it would start at 7 o'clock.
7 o'clock, okay. Does that work for you?
That works just fine for me.
Yeah?
Yeah, it'll be just fine for me.
That's what you're hoping for.
So is that an official motion by you?
I proposed it, so.
Yes.
I can make motions.
You can.
Let's see what this four of us here.
Yeah.
I move we have a public hearing for the, for the proposed zoning change on October 7th.
7 o'clock. Second?
Second.
Second, my Rachel, discussion, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained, four, zero, zero.
Good.
Excellent, so that's gonna be a lot of the same people who've got the other.
Right, yes.
Public notice.
Yes.
Public hearing notice.
Yes, we've, we've seen these people before.
But it'll, it'll say exactly what is the.
Right.
It is simply one lot.
Yeah.
Yep.
Simply one lot, and the issue is that that lot is now unusable.
Yeah.
Its frontage is in one district that prohibits its use for access to a use permitted in the balance, the largest portion of the lot, so it now is unusable, simply because by law, access to a use is the same as that use, therefore you can't use the CVRD district as access for an industrial use, simply can't do it.
We saw that.
And, so it's unusable.
I imagine there was a reason why we didn't do this at the time, so it'd be good for you to see what that reason was.
Well, I think it was, if that was.
Well, no, we don't discuss it.
You're totally getting into the substance, but.
Yeah, I'm not gonna tell you, you can't say anything, but. We don't need to discuss it tonight.
I have heard.
But into the public hearing minutes of the last, because it was, it was under discussion.
It wasn't.
It's all right, I get it, I get it. The North Main Street, it was under discussion and, and we could talk separately about some of that history if that would be helpful.
Great, that would be helpful and I certainly appreciate that. The, there are no good alternatives for this landowner, that's the problem, and it was recognized as a problem elsewhere in, on the west side of North Main, and so we're, we're looking to simply have similar. I said what I said, so. Yes, thank you very much.
We can call, feel free to call me in, I can help you.
Do, do you need anything more of me this evening?
We've got your description of the letter again.
Who, who, who hits the butters, who, who?
Well, it'll have to, you know.
It's a public notice process.
It's a public notice.
But it came from, I mean, they'd be paid for by the applicant, by the proposed person.
That's matter, I tend not to get involved and that'd be the discussion between the board and the administrative team with you. I know in the past, the, the persons who have put forth these proposals have paid for those, so that may be something.
For the notices, we're happy, we're happy to do that.
That may be something that you will hear from the administrative staff about.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah, they'll send me a bill, I'm sure.
All right.
Yeah. They have my address.
All right.
They have my address.
That makes it easy.
And we'll talk.
Great, thank you very much. Anything else, Mr. Chairman?
No, thanks for coming and thanks for waiting, but I really didn't want to mess with those other, that other board.
No, I appreciate it.
If it was just us, we could have moved things.
No, no, I appreciate it. I understand that, thank you again. Good night now.
Need you.
Oh, don't talk to him. Next.
All right, let's go back up to number four minutes, do we have minutes from August?
Yes, we do.
Fifth to review. Do you have them, Marie?
Yeah, we got them today.
Oh, yeah, I only have one copy, usually they, they give me lots of copies.
I've got them right here.
Paul, do you have them? I think I might have them.
I, so, I got, oh, yes, I do actually have them here, they're the same, I don't, I'm gonna be back and check.
Nope, that's not them.
If you have a printed copy, John, I think that'd be the one to use.
All right, you're mine.
I would have to assume that.
You know, Max's name is not listed as having been here that day. It's one missing piece.
On the 5th, you were here on the 5th, Max?
Says Paul, Roger, John.
Last meeting, yes.
So that's a missing piece.
Put your name on there then.
I guess it doesn't have it up there.
It doesn't.
Oh, wait, 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 no, that's not true, look, look down further.
We came.
Planning board joint meeting with the zoning board, at the hearing, we called to water with Max.
Oh, he didn't come for the housing part.
Ah, got you, got you, got you, ah, sorry, sorry, sorry.
He didn't come for the housing, but I added.
You are, good, okay.
Yeah.
I thought he was here. And he is listed on the sign-in sheet.
He was here, yep, yep.
For the Walters Propane.
It's just not at the top of the.
I moved to close the meeting, to the closing.
We're the ones who'd still be there.
He was strategic, yes.
Good timing. No, it's, it's, it's.
I guess.
It's at the planning joint board meeting, yeah, yeah.
Did you have a copy there, John, that she sent out?
I have this one.
No, this is a, I don't know why, usually.
I don't have one with me, no.
Here, I, I don't, I wasn't here, so.
I'm just wondering if they.
I didn't see Max's name much.
I'm just wondering if they.
My new computer, I'm so excited.
Well, see, I think they, I think that they added stuff to it from what I put in here.
They've been posting that subcommittee meeting as a full planning board meeting in case a quorum of you guys showed up, so that there isn't.
How do you scroll down with the, I see right here, this pushes it down.
I have no idea. So just in case we.
Right, because other, because if, if a quorum of you showed up, then you would be in violation of open meeting unless somebody left, so to get all of you involved, that's why it's been posted, although, you know, not everybody's required to be there because it's really a subcommittee.
So we've calling it a full meeting in the event that should that happen.
All right.
She did a great job today.
So we want to make a motion to approve those minutes?
Want to do that? I can't.
Oh, you can't, okay, then I'll move to accept the meeting's minutes.
I'll second.
Second, any discussion, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained, three, zero, one.
Okay, let me just go back here. Okay, let me make sure where we need to be here. So, John, you moved the minutes?
You moved them and.
I moved the minutes.
Max seconded and we approved three, zero, one.
And John was here. Okay, that's another.
All right.
Wait, 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 wait.
Any public comments? Nothing in general? Okay. New business, A&R. Do you have an A&R? Which one?
Hope it's there.
Well, we have two, I'll do yours first if you want.
30 Old Main Street.
30?
Old Main Street.
30 Old Main Street, all right, let's do that next. You want to come on up?
And the vote was three, zero, one, is that what you said?
Want to open up?
Yes, I do. I do, let me, please, please, please.
Oh goodness, our table's too big.
I'm so far away. There you go.
All right, I have the application, let me see what it says.
Uh-oh, I just lost it from.
Uh-oh, I just lost it from the.
Uh-oh, right here.
No, that's just one, there's the other one.
Nice.
God.
Richard Willby?
No.
Sheila Willby.
Husband Richard wasn't available this evening, so I'm here.
Oh, okay. But that, I just, well, I got the right.
Richard Willby, that's correct.
All right, so we have an application from Richard Willby Jr. for parcel thirty Main Street. And it says what are the proposed changes and it's to partition of remaining, of remaining land into two parcels, one of which is not to be considered a building lot. And it looks like this was received on August ninth. And I'm supposed to check whether the fee was, there is, okay, this one has it all on this. Fee was paid and it was stamped by the town clerk.
In one of the cell phones.
And it looks like it's a, uh, it looks like a correct, I mean, a complete A and R.
So, this is the addition here?
Just tell us who you are and anything else we should know about the plan that we're going to look at.
I'm Sheila Lagrenat. I'm married to Richard Willby and we want to divide the property into two lots instead of the one existing lot it is now.
The, um, I'm Sterling Hubbard and that's basically my plan. That shows the partitioning of a parcel which has existed in that form, um, since eighteen twenty-three. I mean, clearly it was, it preceded any notion of zoning. It was originally extended across what's now five and ten and beyond what was, beyond that was the railroad. But it's been in that shape since, um, eighteen seventy was a railroad and nineteen twenty-three was five and ten. So, it's been unchanged, um, in that whole time, except for those changes.
All right, so we're the Planning Board. I'm John.
Hi, John.
Yep. Rachel, Paul, Max.
Paul.
So, we're going to do these, uh, A and Rs. And what we look at is.
Full disclosure, I was at her wedding, so.
Oh, that's cool.
And who are you?
I'm Pat Smith. I'm from the Franklin Regional Council of Government and I serve as a technical assistant to the Planning Board.
Nice to meet you.
She keeps this in line.
She keeps this in line. So, we just look at a couple things to, to approve this. So, so right now, this, this is, this gets me. So, this is the line that's going to be added.
That's correct. That's the line partitioning the two parcels. So that the remainder to be with Willby's is the, is that which fronts on the main street and the remainder, I mean, the other parcel which is not a building lot is that which, um, extends from five and ten.
All right, but in fact, that lot is sixty, over sixty thousand square feet.
It is, but it had, by itself, it hasn't sufficient frontage.
What do we have here?
Looks like you got a hundred and fifty some feet of frontage over there, right?
Yeah.
What district is it in?
All right.
Oh, okay, so it needs two hundred feet.
It's two hundred feet.
Yeah.
And over here, you got one sixty-eight, but it, it's already there, so we can't.
It's, it is what it is.
Right. We can, we can't create, we can't create it on the.
That's right.
So it's a pre-existing non-conforming.
That's right.
Yeah.
But the new ones that are being created do have the two hundred?
There's only one lot being created which is labeled as not to be considered a building lot.
Yeah. Well, we can't, we cannot anyways, even if it was two hundred feet, we can't say it's a building lot.
I understand.
So, that's, so that's good. That has to be there anyways.
It's just on the deed, that's what it is.
So, we appreciate it. It's already written there, because sometimes we have to tell people to go back and write it, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
Size, shape, what was the other thing? Those are like the things we look at.
Accessibility. It's got frontage on the road.
Basically, it's frontage and whether there's adequate access over that frontage.
And it doesn't even have to be, doesn't even have to be sixty thousand feet. It can be whatever.
It can be whatever. And no funky easements or anything that we can.
Nothing special there. Just a little argument over some trees it might be, if they're, drawing leaves on the wrong side of the line.
We always get curious what you're going to do with it, but we have no, uh, we have no reason to.
We don't have any, any right there.
All right, so, any motion? You can move, what is your complaint?
Uh, no, just, I usually move. Okay, so I move, we accept it.
Okay. Rachel, and I'll second it then. Jack, Max did second it. I'll second it.
You second it. And then I'll ask for any discussion? Any questions? Looks good.
It's a line.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, four, zero, zero.
Who's got the Sharpie? I know, and I have stopped carrying the big, I always have a Sharpie, but I, I've streamlined my pocketbook wearing.
And now, see, you don't have what you need.
My shoulder is a lot healthier.
Come on, there's four pens in this. I didn't always put the Sharpie back.
The minute you take it out, then you have a need.
That's right. Absolutely. I might not use it for the last three years, but next week I'll.
It looks special.
I don't know, it's not. It's just a ballpoint pen.
Yeah, but, well, it not work?
That's better. Ballpoint's fine.
I think it actually.
It's better than one of these. It's better than one of these. Ballpoint is good on the Mylar.
All this time, we've been so fussy.
Well, the Sharpies are the best, but you don't, you don't want to use one of these.
All right, I'm signing that, it's a merge and making off of this.
Should I date it too?
Twenty-six.
Don't make any big commitment.
There you go. Next. Oh, I signed all of them.
Twenty-two Stillwater.
Stillwater.
Yeah. Well, if that's his, I'll stay for that too.
Okay.
Four, two it is.
So, you're going to sell it to, is that public information? What are you going to do with that?
We are dying of curiosity. We're signing, so.
You can say no comment.
We're all really here, because we're just butting kisses.
Four, zero, zero. It'd be a great place for a big box store.
Big box store, yeah, maybe not.
What about storage?
Oh, well, those storage units. You got enough there? How many do you need?
We need all four of us to sign. Oh, how many copies? They didn't, they didn't. Yeah, we need all four of us. That's a quorum.
Well, here's the, here's the Mylar thing.
All right, so you take that back and, um.
What did we do for Sharpies and Mylar?
Let's give them an unsigned one too.
All right, you check your, because that's where I'll sign it.
Take this, yeah, wait, 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 let me, there you go, there you go. Okay.
They're going to files. I don't know how Casey filed them.
And we have.
Here's another one.
Wait, you keep two or three?
I don't know.
Do you know what we do with all this?
Typically, you keep a couple, three copies. That's what, come on, Dick gets one.
Let's sign one more.
You get one.
No, there was a bottom one that, uh.
All right, here.
Extras, you know, they can take beyond what you guys need. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
That way we can get.
Mylar's the only thing that we have to have on the board.
You should get one.
Did you have other purposes for the other signed ones you must?
All right, now we're going to sign one more there, Max. So, there's one paper, one Mylar, and we get three papers.
Here, Max, last one.
After all that, and we're still going to get up really in the last one.
Harder to big discussion yet, I hate to tell you.
Oh, what's the big discussion?
Marijuana.
Oh, yes.
It's the big discussion.
Oh, yes.
So, I keep telling my mother.
Mylar's in them most.
Oh, there's some idea.
What?
We can grow medical marijuana. No, but all of grandchildren are like.
Hey, come on, Grandma.
But you can still probably get in on one of these.
Let's get in on the marijuana.
It's great farmland. It's great farmland.
Wow, I don't even thumbs that.
Cultivate, yeah.
Well, no entrepreneurial opportunities.
Is that what you're dividing that property?
We don't want to own it at the time, right? Somebody else needs to own it. That's hard work. That's right, hard work.
Now that you've brought it to my attention. Just want to reach.
All right, second A and R, twenty-two Stillwater, um.
Good.
Thank you.
Richard Baranowski.
We'll be talking.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thanks.
I know Rick would have been here if he had known. I, I think he thought that it was going to be your next scheduled meeting.
Well, I mean, sometimes.
This is great. I'm, I'm here and I can address it and I can take the Mylar to him and I'm happy to do it.
Do you want to look at it?
Yes.
Otherwise, there'd have to be a waiver signed on the, you know, because it'll go beyond the twenty-one days if it's.
It's not a, um, I mean, it doesn't appear to have any controversy to it whatsoever, I would hope.
So, it says on this, it's a partition of existing four point seven-two acre parcel into sixty thousand square foot lot with a remaining of three point three-four acres.
Rick bought what was his, his mother's place. All of the various Baranowskis have, their, all their lots come from that parent piece. And this, this sixty thousand square foot lot is for Rick's granddaughter.
This one?
So, it's, it's all in the family.
Is this sixty thousand one on the corner?
That's for his granddaughter and the remainder is, is just the remainder.
One fourteen Lee, so it's.
The address goes, the address actually goes with Rick's mother's house, which is the older house that.
Right here.
That's, that's correct.
Let me see, so then, thirty-three point, what's that? How many acres?
Where?
Says three point seven, four point seven.
Thirty-three hundred forty.
Thirty-three hundred and forty acres?
Thirty-three hundred forty, yeah.
What's that?
Three thousand?
Yeah, that's what I just wondered.
Hundred and forty acres.
What is, what's that number of acres there on the?
There's a point in there.
Where's the point?
It's three point three. There is a decimal.
Oh, okay, so I'm the tail of the three.
I don't know why that font, but it's three point three.
You fit your glasses.
I was going to say.
I'm glad that wasn't a typo.
Yeah, no, no, no. I'm saying it can't be thirty-three hundred and forty acres.
You're one heck of a nice lot.
Can't see a point.
That goes far back.
But you can't, you can't see the point. We'll put it in there.
There actually is a, I can see it, but the three from the font runs into it. The other thing about that font, did some of the letters look like double-spaced when they're not? But that's just the hazards of autocad.
Don't you try to fix it or you.
You can't yet, really, no. You'd have to double-space it.
What district is this one in?
All right.
All right, so we're partitioning this, it's the corner lot then.
Yep.
It's coming off. And it has, um, this is two hundred and eighteen.
Yeah. Over two hundred with the frontage and thirty, sixty thousand square feet. So, it's.
And it's a little funky in the back there, but, um.
Not bad.
Our angle thing, it's, it doesn't look like it's too tight angles.
No.
If they're too tight. How about, this is the one that also, you don't want to create one that's. What is our angle rule?
Oh, your angle rule.
Okay, it's, you've got to get all the angles.
I don't understand this bit.
What's that? That's for the space. It's to get everybody the right frontage and the right, right acreage.
This part is?
Yes, yeah. Without that, they don't have.
They don't get the sixty.
Yeah, okay, okay, okay.
Plus, plus you need the minimum width there, which is what's reflected in the.
That's on eighty-two and eighty-three in your copy of your zoning, those drawings.
You have to take your glasses off through here too.
Sixty, minimum sixty-degree angle between fronts.
Everybody else has to put them on.
Lot line and adjoining lot lines. Minimum lot width example.
Got your contact lens, then I'll be going back to putting them on.
I can't wear contacts because of astigmatism.
All right, yeah, none of this is, um.
Problematic.
Problematic. Yeah. Remember, it was about, they couldn't do something funky just so you could get a wider or something, I don't know. I mean, it's this angle that I'm looking at here.
Right.
How do we know? We don't have people write down, does that say any angle?
Nope.
And we don't say, we don't have people write down angles.
So, what's the angle, the regal with you?
Here it comes.
You can add the bearings.
That, that angle, it says setup, set.
That's a set, that stands for a set, that's the monument set at that corner.
Okay.
Just, this angle can't be less than sixty degrees interior angle.
Sixty?
Sixty degrees.
It's, yeah.
It's probably, it's probably close.
Forty-five almost, doesn't it?
Yeah, right. Ninety's there.
Forty-five.
Forty-five is there, so. And I can't remember why not considered.
Where is the, um. It's in the zoning.
No, I understand, I remember that.
I don't remember the angle, I just remember it's there. And they have a sample, they have an example. Yeah, here you go.
And you want to go back one page to the definition?
Property line dividing a lot from a single street right away in the case of a corner lot or a three lot, at least one front lot must conform to the minimum lot frontage. A minimum interior angle of sixty shall separate a front lot line from any other adjoining.
Minimum sixty right here.
You know what, but that's for measuring the, uh.
The front line.
But this is the one we're not changing, so I think it's.
Well, that's the one that would be non-conforming, the, the existing one, by doing it, right?
Right, so you can't create a non-conforming one.
Do you have a compass with you?
No, I need, I need a calculator. I didn't bring one.
If I have a light.
I have a calculator on my phone.
A minimum interior angle sixty shall separate.
That angle there on the original lot.
Oh, you've got it perfect.
Any other adjoining.
Yep.
Okay, all new tech this summer.
Well, actually, which is the sixty degree angle here?
Can't use any of it?
Well, here, take this, take this angle here, this is correct, and see if it's.
But is that just for counting? Is that just for the calculation of the sixty thousand square feet?
It's, it's more for the frontage.
Yeah.
That you don't have a.
So, you get your, and then it goes way back, you know, at a tight angle, so you don't have your width there.
Their feet and a big taper.
I mean, neither of these have a frontage issues. Could he, could he cut, uh.
Yeah, what's the, what have we got here? We've got two hundred and thirty-seven feet, so what if you, what if you cut straight across there and added just that little triangle onto hers? Would that, would that do it, you know?
Well, it becomes a little silly, because I'm going to draw on this. If you do that.
No, no, not that.
No, but if you do that.
Then it's legal. I know.
I could come in there for one foot and do that.
Yeah, but what I'm saying too, is that you could just draw a line straight across here and.
That's exactly the same thing.
Yeah.
But, yeah, yeah.
One way or the other, that's a little bit of a.
If that's what, if that's what needs to be done, we can change it. If that's what, um, if that's what needs to be done, we can change it.
But I don't, I certainly don't agree that that's the intention of the law, that law, that you could make it one foot and then come in at any angle you want.
That's what the language is.
Well, but then I thought, I think we might have had other language that says problem minimum.
Well, I, I think your angle, your line is, is to predict sixty thousand feet, right? That's what your line is for.
This width is what's, this, if anything is tortuous in this, it's, it's this in order to create the sixty thousand square feet.
Right, right. What I'm getting at is if this is sixty thousand square feet and you move this line in a bit and like that, now you've reduced that.
Well, then, there, there are various ways of jockeying it. This may slide this way.
Yeah, you can slide that as far as you want, actually.
It isn't going to take much.
Yep, yep, yep.
I mean, this can be ten feet, twenty feet. It can be whatever seems appropriate to it.
Well, yeah, right.
Could have made it straight back to here.
Well, you still have to keep this, this has to be a hundred feet. These lines are tangent to an arc that's drawn from here.
Uh, I get it.
In order to maintain a hundred-foot...
And then this has to be a hundred feet.
That is actually this bigger sticking point. This is more...
Yep.
But this is because we don't want things where the next owner...
I mean, I...
That's a problem.
I don't remember what the problem was with that angle, but then...
Well, the smaller the angle is, the sillier it becomes in terms of, uh...
You never use it. I'm on the other end.
Exactly. Anything that you can do with it, any setback from the property line for X usage just gives , gives an impact on the width, too, there.
Well, it's got thirty-seven feet to mess with there to go, you know, it's two hundred and thirty-seven feet frontage. The angle, the whole angle thing is about the frontage, and they've got adequate frontage on both sides.
I know.
There's no, there's no geometry tricks there, so...
No needs there.
I think it's just catching our eye, but it conforms to the zoning.
I think it's fine.
So...
All right, do we have, you want to make a motion?
We accept the plans as presented.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Rachel seconded.
Are we setting a precedent for weird?
No.
No? Okay. That's the discussion, then I'm fine.
I don't think so. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It was zero, zero.
So max antes moved. And Rachel Blaine seconded. Is there an E on your name or not?
Do we, um...
That's what I've been putting E on all night. I've got to take it out.
We got this paid up. It says two copies of signed form A.
It's French Canadian.
Select all, what does that mean, Rachel? Is there a way to do that?
Select all.
So why doesn't...
Uh, you got that evil monster PC.
Is there, is there a Mylar there?
If I don't, it's not mine.
Is that a Mylar? Is one of them a Mylar?
Are you in Word?
Yes, it's a Mylar.
He said the Mylar.
Select all and change every place.
Three paper copies, compact disc.
Start writing?
Yes. They didn't, um...
That's it. Find any place, that's what it is.
Fancy stamps we got here in Deerfield. Very impressive.
I think there's only a few places, so if I just up here, see right here, I'll take it out of there. I think I'm going to get them all just while I think that's going.
All right.
Search my places.
I'm signing.
It'll take you to the next one.
Like she said, I'm not that interested in...
Still the twenty-sixth of August.
You're in the butt here. I hate this.
Learning new systems, which, whatever...
Is that Word?
What's that?
Is it Word?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, but it's Windows seven.
It's date twenty-sixth.
She writes twenty-sixth August.
I'm still back in, uh...
Two thousand thirteen.
That's okay, isn't it?
Twenty-sixth August, yeah.
Two thousand eight, I'm still back in two thousand eight.
Usually write August twenty-sixth.
You mean the version of Word or the version of Windows? Yeah, well, that's, I use, I use, um, Word two thousand because it's...
Well, that's not even hardly compatible anymore. If you go three or four, yeah.
What's the new file?
With the X on it.
Doc X.
Yeah.
You can't open them at all.
But you can't, but if you have two thousand, you can go in, there's a patch.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
I, I have a file conversion, and I don't see any difference.
Yep.
You know?
Yeah, I don't, I don't either.
It just seems like one of those things that...
I have two thousand eight on mine.
Just so that everybody had to replace it.
Yeah, I have two thousand eight, so I just, I just went in and I changed everything to doc when I did it.
Yeah, I save most of my files as a compatible file, just because I know there's a lot of people out there that can't open the X's when they show up in their inbox, so. Doesn't do me a lot of good to have it, other than I can offer benefits to it for incorporating tables and...
Well, there's also, there's also the benefit that Microsoft gets that money.
They get that money?
There you go. That's the real benefits there.
But they're suffering.
Oh, no.
Terribly.
They suffer all the way to the bank.
No, I like how they got the new CEO and...
Oh, yeah.
Their, their new operating system for phones failed miserably.
For real.
Hope you don't own any of their stock, you know what I mean?
Who's stock? Who's stock?
Microsoft.
I don't own any stock of theirs. But, and Massachusetts now is going to tax all the software. Did you see it in the paper today?
I don't really understand it.
I was already, I don't think anybody understands it. That's the point. What that applies to. So who keeps what?
So we give him...
A Mylar.
A Mylar, and we just keep three. I think there's four, so he can...
Oh, God!
Yawning.
You guys are all yawning.
Sorry, you caught that, huh?
No time for having coffee and...
Yes. Did you say brandy and syrup and stuff?
You have more after this?
Oh, heck, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It's a big meeting.
Well, that's what they talked about.
You got two more.
It's all the easy stuff. You just saw the easy stuff.
Yeah.
Marijuana comes next, is that it?
Marijuana's next.
Dessert, you wanted dessert.
That's true.
Just getting us ready for the dessert.
All right, so that's, ta-da.
Mylar.
Now, somebody help me out here. This is what Lynn usually does, not me. She's the waitress. How many do we keep?
Three, I think.
Three was on me.
Three, we keep three and give me out here. One back to the other.
There's no extras.
I got two more.
There's two. All right, there are, there are, there are, there are, there are. Here, I'll give you the one you drew on.
Okay.
That's fair.
If you both think it, there must be.
We're a little less up inside it, so...
Yeah, there you go.
Since they get wet, they bleed.
All right, yeah. And you want to, you want one of your...
No.
Oh, I gave you. What was that? That was a thing that was sticking in your hair.
It was, one of my colleagues had their daughter in the office today, and she put these, she gave us...
She walks in with a green sticker in her hair.
It was in my ear or something.
Paul and I were really concerned for your, you know, legitimacy, credibility.
That's right.
With a green sticker in your...
I appreciate the television.
To diminish your authority here.
Television audience was very curious what that is grown out of.
What's that green thing grown out of his ear?
Thank you.
Why do we have a planning board chair with a green thing in it?
What's that?
Thank you.
So hope you aren't here all night.
No.
Uh, just a couple more hours.
So we've got a, uh...
Good night.
New business called Medical Marijuana Zoning. So let's see if there's anything here, and I'll tell you my understanding. Hopefully, there's nothing here. I can tell you my understanding. Good, nothing's here. So I attended a, the select board meeting. Actually, actually, there is something formal. Didn't, um, did Wendy send us something?
There was an email along the way, but I never saw a formal letter.
I think there was at least an email saying...
I'm sure I printed that email out.
So anyway, a week ago, I wrote, I attended a select board hearing. There were several interesting things on it, so I attended it. One of which was a question to the select board whether they wanted to put a moratorium on...
Marijuana dispensaries?
On the, on whether, I forget what it was. A moratorium on having medical marijuana dispensaries in the town. And the proposal, or the discussion was, should they put a moratorium that there can't be any until we come up with zoning? And the discussion ensued. The police chief was there, building inspector was there, I was there, a couple of select board people, and administrative assistant, and then someone who might be interested in cultivating it, a farmer was there, as, as well as an attorney, um, who I think represents either cultivators or dispensaries. And so the decision by the select board was to ask to send it to the planning board to determine if changes are necessary in our zoning bylaws for medical marijuana dispensaries and/or cultivation. So we are not asked to put a moratorium. We were asked to, to look into the zoning, and if zoning changes, if we believe zoning changes are necessary, then to start that procedure, which would include a public hearing and, and some recommendations. There was a lot of information discussed at the meeting from the attorney, talked about the, um, what regulations already exist in the state for these new medical marijuana laws, which were passed by the voters of Massachusetts last November. And I actually double-checked, and the voters in Deerfield apparently voted to approve it. Sixty-six percent voted to approve that, that change. So obviously, the voters in Deerfield are proponents of medical marijuana dispensaries. And so then the state has done its, its stuff, and the state has come up with a forty-five-page document saying how the Department of Public Health will go about choosing people and placing these dispensaries. And apparently, thirty-five people will get permits to do it, the thirty-five agents. Some will dispense, some will cultivate, and some will do both. And that's what the Department of Public Health will decide. In this forty-five-page document, there's a lot of information about security on both the actual dispensaries and cultivation. I read it. I don't think any zoning people that have read it can find any zoning in here for it. So the question that, that we've talked about, and a lot of towns are looking at this, so Pat has some other experience from other towns, but when you look at our zoning, our table of uses, there's nothing in there that says, you know, specific for this. So the question is, where would this fall if it, if it did come to us? And where it would fall if we have problems with it, then we should maybe come up with a different, a different use or something.
When I'm passing out now...
So my question before we actually get into this is, it is nine o'clock. There's only four out of seven of us here, which is a little disappointing.
Is that sixty-six percent, though?
So what do we want to, um...
Very close.
How deep do we want to get into it? And, and what's our decisions that we want to make tonight?
Well, the questions before you are sort of out, put forth in this. This is what was presented by Representative of the Mass Union Association at a recent seminar that was held in May by FERC on this issue. I just pulled the slides out that have to do with the local options. The first was a ban. Attorney General has said towns cannot ban that. That contravenes the intent of the law.
Right.
But they have allowed moratoria to go forward. The first one that came through was Burlington to, to give boards the time to talk through the issues and determine what...
A temporary moratorium.
Yes, a temporary moratorium to a date certain, limited in time, allowing for the board to review the impacts and to come up with proposed zoning bylaw changes. So, um, so you can't, you could either do a moratorium to give yourself time to do it, you could look at your bylaws and say, determine that categories, while not specific to this, categories that this would fit into, have the appropriate controls that you would put in place in any case, so that you don't need to do anything. Or you could look at them and say, oh, we need to make changes to be specific, to provide the controls that the town would want. And to do that, then you would go forth with preparing a proposal and holding a public hearing on that proposal. The, um, the first, there's a two-phase application process for these facilities. And the first phase of that was, the applications were due last Thursday. So that's the pre-screen, just on people's curriculum vitae and to do the background checks and so forth. I don't believe in this particular first phase that they had to designate the location as of yet. That will come in the second phase, which should happen sometime in October, where they pony up an even greater amount of money, earnest money basically, associated with the application fee. And then they're looking to be issuing licenses by the end of the year. As John noted, there have been a number of firms, individuals, who have come forward to the town and expressed an interest in citing at least, yes, in Deerfield, at least a facility for the cultivation.
What does this mean?
We're farmers, there's nothing else here.
Is there references somewhere in here to that?
You just can't, you can't ban it. Yeah, I did, I've only banned, I've only given you a couple of the pages. I didn't give you the ban page. I just told that to you because I...
Well, I see it said, I see it said Burlington.
Yeah, Burlington, they allowed the moratorium. Wakefield, it is not allowed. They tried to ban it outright. And if every town in the state had the right to ban it, then they couldn't cite the thirty-five that have been approved across the state. So bans are not allowed. You can condition it. You can put a moratoria in place while you figure out what those conditions are. So that's what that, that reference is. So the, so the things, so this lists the kinds of things that you would want to be looking at if you were going to be reviewing your bylaws or developing new. Where, where would it be allowed? What kind of frontage and setbacks would you like? In the Department of Health Regulations, they refer, the only thing that refers to that is a, is a, uh, an elimination of allowing them within five hundred feet of a school or any place where kids congregate.
Like, oh, all right.
But, you know, some towns might consider, well, you know, that they want a setback. You know, if the, if the regular set, side setback is ten feet in a certain district where it's allowed, that might not be enough.
Fifteen point.
Yeah. So things like that, if you look at parking, again, the distance from schools, parks, residence, you certainly couldn't make it less, but I suppose you could make it more. Any signage? There are extensive, there were extensive elements within the regs.
Do not steal this marijuana.
Well, the regs have a lot about what the signage would look like. So there is a lot in the regs that are relevant, but, um, you know, and the, and the tobacco regulations, the dispensary licenses and all those kinds of things, that's all in there. Whether you wanted to mimic that at the local level is, is a town decision, but it is already included, most of that, um, in those regulations and would be included in whatever permits they get through that.
So these options, these are, this is like the smorgasbord. You get to go and say...
Well, actually, let's, we're the zone, we're the, uh...
Planning board.
Planning board. And so we're about zoning. So I think it's just the one page, like the sales ordinance, that's not our...
This has nothing to do with this. This has to do with this.
No, not even that. Just the one page, the zone.
Presumably, just the zoning. Some of these other things...
The rest is the, the public health.
It could be the Board of Selectmen, yeah. So that's why I left them in. And the Board of Health also because of the, what they refer to as MIPs, marijuana-infused products, edible and non-edible. And Board of Health could get involved in some of the edible issues and the other, yeah. So, so those, that's, that's a sort of a gray area, and so there's multiple, the planning board may not be the only board in town that would be addressing the issues. The point of leaving those there.
So again, what, what I went to was I went, where would this fit in our current zoning? And is, and is it sufficient? Is our current zoning sufficient? And the first issue that came up was cultivation. And I should tell you, the select board, which is really just two members, Carolyn and Mark at this point, and Carolyn had an opinion that maybe we could separate that cultivation, we could have one, look at one way, and dispensaries is a separate thing, which some, some people are going to do both. And actually, I think a lot of people are going to apply to get this permit, are going to grow it in a warehouse, and then in the front of the warehouse, we'll sell it. So, so it's one actual structure, one premise. But out here, it could be that people out here might cultivate it, and then a dispensary would be somewhere else who would sell it. And that's permissible on this lot, too. So if it's, if it's, if it's considered agricultural use in our, in our bylaws here, if it's an agricultural use exempted under general law forty A, then it's, then it's by right everywhere in town.
An argument could be made for that. The state has not come out with a decision saying one way or the other.
And if it's another agricultural use not exempted, then it's a special permit everywhere, and it's actually a no in EPD in the PI district. What's PI again? Plant industrial.
Plant industrial, yeah. I have the, this is the old official zoning map, and I have a smaller version of what you approved that is not yet approved by the Attorney General. If you want to open it up and look at where things are as we're having this discussion.
So that's, that's kind of a, a big one, because...
Huge.
I think, and I should say, the building inspector at the select board meeting indicated that the police was all for it as long as security's taken care of. Building inspector, basically, you know, I don't want to put words in people's mouths, but it had no problems, but did question that maybe it shouldn't be a special permit.
That's what I think.
And then I said, well, if it's coming to us, I'll be able to make my opinion another time. So that's a thing. If it's, if it's other agricultural special permit, great, but if they, if it did become agricultural use that's exempted, then it's yes everywhere. That's RA, CVRD, C1, C2, C3. So then that might become, maybe we want to do something there.
Well, the thing is, the thing is that, you know, it could be everywhere, but if we set setbacks and things to it, then it possibly would mean that there's only certain places it could be.
Right. And that's what I'm talking about in math.
Once you get into residential thing...
Most of those exemptions allow reasonable regulations for public safety purposes.
Yeah, so, so if you, so you could pretty much eliminate CVRD, and, you know, RA would be a different story, but, um, you know, by the time you get setbacks and protection and all that stuff in there, the lots are going to be a lot different than what they are now.
So why not go with the restricted, the, the other one that John...
Other agricultural use, which just, that means it's an SP. Other agricultural use, which just, that means it's an SP, although then it says no in EPD, which is the Oxford property, which maybe we actually wanna have a special permit in the EPD district. So, it, it could be that we wanna have a different, like, a specific use, I guess, is what I think a lot of people...
You could add it as its own use in the use table.
And then you could just put SPD, like, everywhere, you know?
Put it across, you know, you'd have to add definitions for that. There is a definition of the Medical Marijuana Treatment Center, which would come directly out of the regulations. It does include both dispensing and cultivation. So, that would be an interesting question if you wanted to split it.
Yeah, and then if you...
Allow different things in different districts.
Well, if you keep them together, then all of a sudden, you're gonna have retail, and can that, is that gonna fit with the agricultural?
Well, I guess then they would both have to be zoned. Well, actually, so, some of these are gonna be in a warehouse under lamps, so then I think it comes under, it's not agriculture, then it would come under our industrial, which is processing fabrication.
You know, and that's something you guys aren't gonna be able to figure out, that's a lawsuit. To make that decision is a lawsuit, right there, because I can...
What use it comes under?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause even if it's in a warehouse with grow lights...
You could still call it agriculture.
Like, you could see somebody coming up and making the case, that's how you do agriculture now.
What's the difference between that and the greenhouse?
Right.
Um, so...
So, that's why you'd wanna make a whole separate...
I would, you know, the thing, the problem, I wouldn't even get hung up on the agricultural exemption until and unless someone brings it forth, because it's just been raised by the state as, well, this might be an issue, there's no case law that would say whether it will qualify or not, so, you know, I think the best thing you could do would be to set everything else up the way you would, you know, regardless of, of that.
Are you suggesting an overlay, then?
I'm not suggesting anything, I'm just saying that I, I don't, I wouldn't get all hung up on the agricultural exemption, because we don't know if it is or isn't, I would operate on the assumption, you know, with that aside.
So, if I can just say something quickly, so, there is this long document that I think, at some point when we really get in to discuss this, which is gonna need to be soon, is everybody should read it. To me, it allays a lot of issues. It, it, this is so heavily restricted, so detailed, who's gonna get the permit, people have to be, go through Cory checks and all kinds of things, so it's gonna be responsible people getting the permits, all kinds of security about where it can be cultivated, how it can be transported, how it can be handled, locked up, big walls.
Seen.
Dispensaries, the same thing, all security, every, every little leaf has to be accounted for, it's amazing. In Franklin County, each county can have up to five dispensaries, but, and they, they wanna have one in every county, I guess, but it's also based on each, each...
I think Greenfield's already said that they...
Each county can only...
They're discussing a moratorium.
Have, each county...
Yeah, but they're saying they don't even think they need one, I think the last I heard...
So, each, each county can have one, but it's also based on the county, you can only produce as much as you can sell. This is really linked up, each dispensary has a cultivator...
It cannot be producing enough for the whole country.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, each dispensary and cultivator have to be kind of paired. And so, then what gets cultivated, gets dispensed, and the, and the cultivator even is told ahead of time about how much they're gonna need, so they try to plan accordingly. And they're gonna be all, all over the state. So, I'd say, I read this, I heard this story, I looked into it, I was like, you know, this is no big deal. So, I was hoping that our use table could just, we could just plop it right in there and fit it, and we don't have to do anything further than that. Then all these other issues come up where, well, there's a couple places where it could be allowed by right, this cultivation in the RA and the, and the CVRD, and, ah, maybe that becomes... So, I guess I would like to propose that we, we put two new uses in here, or add some uses based on this new, new law, and that then we have a, and in order to do that, we need to then have a public hearing. And so, if we propose the use, propose something now, have a public hearing on October 7th, and then make a decision afterwards.
So, what would you propose?
So, I would propose adding a, a, two new uses, one being the dispensaries, and one being cultivation, and then it'd be allowed, it would be basically, the principal use for the dispensaries would be matched retail sales with a building greater than 4,000 square feet, which is no in many districts and SP in C1 and C2. And I would, and then make EPD a SP also. And then the cultivation, make it the same as a non-agricultural use, which is SP everywhere. And I would add SP to plant industrial and EPD. So, we're, we're mirroring things that we have right here, and just adding a couple SPs, changing a couple yeses and a couple nos to SPs.
But we're adding them, we're just gonna make them like them.
Yeah, we're not making significant changes.
So, let me, let me clarify, which one you said for the dispensaries, building 4,000 square foot or less?
Or more.
Or the, what, 4,000 up to 30,000?
4,000 up to 30,000.
Right. All right.
So, that's a no in RA and CVRD, because we don't allow retail there. It's a SP in C1 and C2, which is where we want retail.
And you would want a SP in EPD as well.
And then I would add an SP in, I guess, in all the others, industrial, plant industrial, and EPD, because the industrial, if someone wants to do...
So, SP across the board.
Grow and sell.
So, we're not really matching it anymore, we're just gonna, we're gonna make it no-no, and then SP across the board.
Okay.
Why wouldn't we wanna encourage them to, to manufacture and sell in the same location by making it in the plant industrial?
The definition includes them both.
That's what I'm saying, I would put an SP in plant, I would put a SP...
And why would you put it, why would you put it in the EPD anyways? Why would you even have it in there? Do you have to?
No.
That's the Oxford guy.
Why not?
I know.
Why not? EPD is similar...
I don't know, I'm just asking the question.
EPD is similar to a C1.
Because you see, the EPD, but the EPD has already been set up with a certain process in mind already, and it's just like a little special section. So, why would you wanna go in and muck with what's already been done?
You're right, so we should just leave it a yes, you're right, you're right.
Yeah, so I'm thinking, just leave it out of here, not that it couldn't be in there, but why should it be?
Basically, the EPD is a special permit on, on...
Anyway.
Yes, yes, and they've already done something specific.
All the performance standards that are incorporated.
I'd leave it out of that one.
So, you leave it as a yes in that one?
Yeah. Yeah, we leave, what is yes?
No.
EPD.
At, EPD, it's a, it's a, it's by right, but then they still have to fulfill all of the EPD requirements. So, you put a yes there. You don't wanna put, you can't put a no there, 'cause then...
Why not put an SP there?
Because what he's saying is, it's, basically, EPD already is like an SP, it's got its own review process.
Yeah, it has 4750, has a whole set of performance standards.
Yeah.
Who does that, though?
Who does enforce the EPD?
I think the Board of Selectmen is the special permit granting authority for the EPD.
Well, that was...
Did we argue about that, that it should be ours, and then they took it somehow, or...
No, it was voted, it was voted.
There was this need for great speed and getting everything through.
Right, and he, being able to move.
That was four years ago.
That was four years ago. Yeah.
No comment.
Yeah, so I guess if yes applies, then that would be it, but I...
Well, why not put SP there, and then just...
Well, because why mess with it?
Too slow down.
That means you have to go to the zoning board and this other board, it becomes like just more complicated.
Yeah, yeah, I'd just leave it where they've got it, and if...
We can, we should actually look into that, and just double-check what the EPD standards are.
Absolutely, it's because...
It's not that this EP, it's not the EPD standards, it's that they, they've already designed a use for that land, and they've already given the expedited permitting, ready to go for whoever buys it.
Right, but we wanna make sure that it's, that their standards don't prohibit this new activity, I guess.
Oh, okay.
All right, so we should look into that. But anyway, for now, I'm proposing that we leave it as a yes, that it's no-no, SP, 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 and a yes.
Yes.
Let's just get something on the table, and then we can have a public hearing.
Right, then we can change it.
Because otherwise, we have to have another meeting.
I have, I'm gonna tell you right now, 'cause I did, I told her I would check on this, and my boss has not allowed me to write this up and go straight to public hearing without you all seeing it again and proving it. She said she didn't care what the law was about it, that we just don't work that way, that it's really important, something like this, for y'all to see it.
Who's paying your bills?
She pays more of it than you do.
Well, wait a minute, now, who signs the check, that's the most important thing.
I mean, when we've gone to...
And you have questions?
Town meeting with other things you've drawn up, it, it's kind of like a, what did we approve? You get the final draft when you show up at town meeting.
That's why you don't wanna have that happen.
I would agree that we should have our, um...
Sorry?
I would agree that we should look at it again and have our, our town attorney even look at it.
Yes, especially because we're splitting these two uses out.
But can't we do that on email?
Yes, yes, we don't have another meeting for it.
Can't, we don't have to have another meeting for it.
You can't, you can't approve it as a board by, via an email, that would be violation of open meeting law.
No, we're, we're approving it tonight with the condition that it get reviewed by...
Yeah.
By, uh...
Legal counsel.
And then legal counsel makes changes, and when are you going to review that and approve it to go to a public hearing?
Then we would have to schedule another, another meeting, yeah. I don't see them making changes. All right, so that was the dispensary one, now, now the cultivation one? If we just keep it the same as other agricultural use, which is SP across the board?
And what do they have in EPD?
But I would add a SP to, to PI, here it has no for PI, and, and add a yes to EPD, which is right here, it's a no. I don't know why that's a no.
Okay, you know, the other thing we're looking at here, obviously, is that somebody in this, in this slide here, you know, was saying to make a overlay zone.
You could create an overlay district, not unlike what you did for the adult entertainment. In fact, you could use that.
And I gotta tell you, and I wanna go on record as this, I think what we did with the adult entertainment was nuts, and I certainly don't wanna do that again. If you look at this, and, and, this is just my opinion, this is such a, a minor new business, that we have liquor stores on the corner of downtown, we have pharmacies on the corner of downtown, we have Cumberland Farms on the corner of downtown selling cigarettes, we have many more dangerous things going on in this town that are allowed by right, and people are just doing all over the place. So, to make this, to be super restrictive on this, I believe is, is not warranted. So, I think we should give this, you know, put it into our zoning, keep it out of places that we don't want retail or things like this, but don't make it so restrictive, and I think that's what overlay districts end up doing, is make it too restrictive. I know we have farmers in this town who wanna cultivate it, we might have other business people who wanna do this. My only issue to some extent is that this is supposed to be nonprofit entities who run these, and I wanna make sure that they do pay taxes if we can, if, if that's, I don't know how that falls into the state laws.
I don't know, I didn't really read it to that.
But, but I did get nervous about that, because I think that's something that the town, if we're gonna allow, to me, this is a money-making business for someone, so the town should be able to assess taxes on it.
Maybe some payment in lieu taxes arrangements, you know, that...
And I don't know what the zoning board can do on that, but that's something we can, we can bring into the discussion to make sure, 'cause for some reason, the state's set it up so these have to be nonprofit entities, because they're supposed to be cultivating and dispensing for, for sick people.
Right.
Basically, so it's a way to try to keep the price down, I guess, for them. So, that's, that's why I'm, I'm putting forth my motion that we, we do these two uses.
Now, this is in that, that 45-page pamphlet that you got there, that's supposed to be nonprofit?
Yes. I can send you all copies of this when I send out a draft.
Copies?
Of the regs.
Oh, oh, I thought you had it inside the zoning...
No, 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 no.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that'd be great, send out a copy, yeah.
See you tomorrow, once I'm...
It's right online, I just, you just Google 105 CMR.
It's easy, find it online, but I can send it to you.
Okay, good.
Great. Um, so, and these uses are gonna be, so you wanna, you want cultivation to be under ag in the table?
You know, I...
And dispensary under retail in the table?
And I guess the other thing is, if it's dispensary and cultivation together, where does it go?
I'd like to, I think I'd like to back up just a minute, John. I mean, I, I know you've spent some time on this, and you've done some stuff, but I guess I'm in favor of slowing down a little bit, rather than rushing in to do it, because I hear what you're saying, and I'm not sure I'm against what you're saying, but there's a lot of assumptions been made here that have been made by you and you only, you know, and so, we, we may end up saying we agree with what you have to say, but, but we also don't have the opportunity to, and if we go into, if we go into a public hearing, and we're just, we're just pursuing one option without, without any others, I just don't know if we're gonna be...
All right, so put another proposal on the table.
Well, no, no, I, I'm, I'm just thinking that, that come up with the one, and, and come to another meeting, and then put the public meeting off for another month, whatever we need to do. I mean, I, I, I don't know.
The problem is, if you wanna get it to town meeting, you're still aiming for this October town meeting, and if you wanna have anything, if you're not gonna do a moratorium, and I'm getting the, I've gotten strong feeling that don't wanna do a moratorium, to buy yourself time, in the meanwhile, there are going to be proposals that will be brought to town, that seems to be fairly clear, that someone may actually have a license to come to town by the end of the year.
Okay.
And you won't have anything in place, so if there are things that you think should be put into place to protect the interests of the town, then you, you are on a short time.
But how many people, how many different organizations in this town need to come up with the final thing? I mean, if we decide something here tonight, or the, or the next couple of weeks, then, then we've got the Board of Health, we've got the Selectmen, we've got everybody else...
Your piece is a piece that has to go to town meeting.
Oh, the only...
The other piece of this, and I hear what you're saying, Paul, 'cause me and John's been thinking about this a lot longer than we have, is that it gives us something to work with, we can still monkey with it. It gives us, it gives us something to...
Right, it's a start.
It's a starting point, so, we are, we're in playing catch-up with him, and I totally agree that, you know, this is something that, you know, thank goodness, somebody's up front of it, because it sounds like the select board's already, you know, up to their elbows, and it behooves us to kinda do some catch-up, 'cause otherwise, we're gonna get caught with our pants around our ankles.
Well, what was, what was the thought at the Selectmen's meeting, and what was, what was the...
So, so...
Kick it to the point, anyway.
Well, they kicked it to us.
Well, yeah, but I mean, did they have any other ideas there?
No. Am I, um, I, what Rachel said is exactly right, and my understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we, if we wanna get to a public hearing, you gotta put something on the table for them.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The public hearing can go any direction you want it to, and it can be continued if you want it to.
And people will get their ideas out.
But I think, what I really object is when four or seven of us, whatever's on this planning board, start doing things, you know, and then we move it down the road, and then we have a plan, a public hearing. I'd rather have the public hearing quick, I'd rather just open this up, get people's input.
Especially on this one, 'cause...
But you still have to have presented a proposal for people to provide comments, too, and so that's where I'm trying to go, is to having a formal proposal.
Which is why I wanna put this on the table, propose it, it can be, and then it gives, it gives from now until October 7th for people to research this thing, it's starting to get in the newspaper, everybody should read this, everybody should talk to people, and then we start the public hearing with this proposal, but then it can go any direction after that. But, it just, to me, it's kinda nuts for people to, you know, come up with some restrictive thing or this or that, so, so I'd rather get to the public hearing quickly, I don't wanna have a lot of other meetings about it prior to a public hearing, to tell you the truth.
And this is, this is, what's it, what's, where is it online?
DPH, just, just go to mass.gov and Google medical marijuana, and you get to a page for it, and there's a link on there for the regs.
I just Googled Massachusetts medical marijuana, and...
Yeah, it's, uh, it's prominent.
It's called 105 CMR.
105 CMR.
And then there's another, chapter 269 was the law that was actually, or something like that.
Yeah, that, well, there's the law, and then these are the regulations that, that correspond to the law, I always go to the regulations.
A little bit longer.
Um, so...
A little bit longer.
Timing.
So, how soon can you get this out?
Well, I can send that out tomorrow. The question is if you want me to draw up the changes, now we've...
Well, no, no, I just wanna read it, I just wanna see it.
Yeah, I can send that out to you tomorrow.
Yeah, okay, dude, that'd be great, then I won't, I won't bother, I'll just...
Um, does everybody want me to send that out? I'll just send that out right away, and then we'll, we'll do the rest. The thing is, even, even if you're not, well, to do, to have the notice in, if you're gonna, if you're gonna go with the same public hearing date that we said earlier for Pervier, which was your next scheduled meeting on 10th, we had talked about having the legal notices in on the 16th and the 23rd.
Right.
That those legal notices and all the materials that go with them would have to be completed by the 13th, I am out that whole week, so if you're relying on me to do it, whatever I was involved in would have to be done by Thursday the 5th.
And our meeting is the 7th?
Is the, see, the thing is...
No, 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 I was talking, September.
Yeah, but, but the thing is, that all the materials, when that legal notice hits the paper, the purpose of the legal notice is to let the public know that there is a proposal for them to review that will be at this public hearing, so all the materials have to be in their final form at the town clerk's office the day that legal notice...
Yeah, and we do not have a meeting before October 7th, correct?
We don't have one today.
We don't have a, we don't have a meeting before the end of next week. It's not that it has to be there on October 7th, it has to be there on 9/16, ready to go.
Right, and we don't have a meeting in September, period.
Right, so that's why we were trying to figure out, is there any way that we can create this proposal, and I'm reluctant to do so, without you having a meeting to look at something on paper and vote it? Yes, this is the proposal we want to have put forth to the public and have reviewed at a public hearing, John's trying to figure out a way, you know, to avoid doing that, and I'll work, I'll work along with that, but...
Let me throw out something here, there was, um...
You were gone the week of the night.
I'm gone from the 9th through the 14th.
There's going to be a housing, another housing meeting like we had tonight on the 16th of September.
It's too late.
Yeah, it's too late.
That's the date that the legal notice has to be in.
Okay, all right, I'll just, just...
So, it would have to be, basically, if you were gonna have a meeting, you'd have to have it next week.
But that's, that's labor due.
That's why we're doing a meeting tonight.
So, you'd have to have a different day.
And, but my, what would be the purpose of that meeting, I guess?
I don't know, I'm just...
Review it and vote it as the official copy of the proposal to be reviewed at the public hearing.
And that's only because you're saying that we can't do that tonight.
Because you don't have anything in front of you.
We, I just said it, I can write it down.
You know, you can try...
I mean, I'm trying to make it really easy, 'cause I just copied it right on here with a couple changes.
Well, just, one additional, just one, just one additional thing that comes right up.
Yep.
You need definitions. So in addition to the things that you suggested, we have to define what those things are. We have a definition here of medical treatment facility, we don't have separate definitions for the cultivation and dispensing pieces, and that's something I would be particularly interested in having council review, doing help with. And there's always, is there site plan review involved? You have special permit, is there site plan review involved? Are there things that it might be triggered?
Well, site plan reviews involved if it's 600 square feet disturbed.
Now, what is the reason we have to do this?
This is why we take great care with this. It seems really simple, oh, we'll just plug this in here. Except for there's 25 other things that have to be looked at to make sure that they all...
But why are we rushing? Is there some deadline? I mean, could it be the May, could it be the May meeting or the April meeting?
You may already have licensed dispensaries in town by May.
Yeah.
And they would not then be subject to any zoning that you implemented.
Well, they'd be subject to this zoning.
I'm not sure I like the rush to judgment here, I really am not.
How are they going to come into town when there's no, what is it going to do?
They're going to get a license from the state.
And just move into town and sell where?
Whatever they designated in their implication to the state that they want to do it.
But they'd go by our current zoning, and they would come in and try to...
They have to figure out, again, they didn't do what we did, where could, what could you plug in? Like we were doing earlier for Walters, which use listed here does it best plug into?
And then they would be deciding that.
Well, and you guys could, or the ZBA is going to be the permit. They would be the ones that would be looking at it and saying, well, no, we don't really think it's that. Dick would be the first line, because they'd come to him with the proposal, and he'd say, no, maybe I think it's better on this particular use, and this would be what would apply. So that would be the discussion. They are absent, it's being a specific use. And you do that all the time.
And if you look at our zoning, in RA and CVRD, there are no's and special permits, up and down all the columns.
Okay, all right, listen, you know what I'd like to do?
Can I just finish my sentence? For them to come in and plop down someplace we don't, they would have to fit under agricultural. And a dispensary certainly couldn't fit under that.
Except that the definition has them both, so that's my question to council. Is how do you split them if the actual definition and the regulations incorporates both cultivation and dispensing activities?
I think I would like to find some way, if we have to have another meeting, have another meeting, but be able to have you write down what you want to do and take a look at it.
That's what I want to do, I'm throwing this out there.
No, but your, what do you call it, your motion.
Of what's going on.
Off the motion.
I'd like to see what you've got down in writing and then be able to digest it a bit, even if we had to come and meet another day.
But also know the questions that Pat's talking about in terms of...
Yeah.
And that's not coming from John, that's going to come from us in terms of, or Pat, too.
I mean, if we've got to do it before the thing, I guess I'd be in favor of either meeting again or going to a moratorium, if that's what we got to do to protect ourselves.
Which will close down the economic development opportunity of those folks.
And I'm not saying we have to do a moratorium, I'm just saying that if we're going to rush through this, let's rush through it smartly, let's not just rush into it.
I guess I'm concerned about what rush means to you, because we put down, we put together this proposal, then we schedule a public hearing, we listen to everybody, we think about it, we talk about it.
Right, but we're...
But he's responding, I think, to Pat's concern that we're not taking due diligence.
You're not wanting to take some time to look at it first, then come up with a proposal, and then do it. Which I think we can do, but it means another meeting, and that's the thing I'm nervous about.
I've been to a few meetings, I've thought about it for a long time.
Well, I know you have, John, and I'm not saying you're wrong at all, I'm just saying, you may be right, but I'd like a chance to do all that research that you've done already and see for myself that this is what we should be doing.
All right.
That's all I'm asking, it's just a matter of taking that little bit of time and having one more meeting if we need to.
And I'm pointing out there that it's not, that I don't think it's necessary.
Yeah, I know.
So, um, so why don't I start, I made a motion, I'll make a motion to add to... I'm not against what you're saying, but I just feel like I think we can...
I just know that if we come to a public meeting, and the whole board has to defend what this board does...
But we don't have to, that's the thing, at the public meeting. But I think what, I'm more sensitive to what Pat's saying, which is that how does she create a warrant without knowing? Are you comfortable enough doing that? And she's not, that's where, that's my sticking point.
I'm uncomfortable with that, where I'm, you know, mind melding, you know, taking notes and trying to figure out what everybody here would want.
Here, we're all so comfortable with you doing that for us.
Yes.
Is there some kind of implant you can get?
Stop invading my mind, mama.
I don't think I want an implant, frankly.
Did you ever see the next generation there where Picard and the doctor got connected?
That was weird, wasn't it?
So can we just then advise to put together a...
You can ask me to put it together and figure out what you're going to do with it, the question is...
Then we'll meet in two weeks. September 9th can we meet? But then you're aware that way.
No, I'm gone.
So September 3rd, 4th, or 5th?
Yes, or during the week, one day.
Or whatever, we can't meet Monday, because that's the holiday.
Maybe Thursday, how about, is Thursday okay?
That's the 5th.
Is that a good day or a bad day?
That's, uh...
That's the fair day, too, isn't it?
Any day for me.
Not the start of the year.
Is that the Frank County Fair?
Yeah.
That's the wristband night usually, isn't it?
Yes, it is, it is wristband night.
And if we could finalize it, then, you know, then administrative staff could work on the legal notices and everything and get those in.
It could be the quickest meeting ever.
They can't meet the 3rd, I could meet the 4th.
The 4th would be better for me.
That's a Wednesday.
To be honest, I would commit to a half-hour meeting on the 4th to look at this.
All right, okay.
The 5th I have.
I'll check my schedule when I get home, but I think it's okay.
People at my house. That's the number of...
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM, 7:30.
And that works for you?
I was just going to say during the day works for me, too, if anybody else can do it.
My day's free.
No.
Let's just stick with this, because otherwise, we're all...
To get Lynn and John probably here, I doubt it.
All right, so, um...
And Roger.
And Roger.
He's got a more flexible schedule.
I thought he sits around all day.
I thought you said he was coming tonight, Rachel. He's got a town job, doesn't he? Oh, Roger.
Okay, so 7:00 PM, you think is better, so that everybody could potentially be there?
Well, then, it's just a time we recognize.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
Wednesday.
What's that, Max?
He said Wednesday. It's just Wednesday.
And I will have...
It's Prince Spaghetti Day.
So everybody will try to get this and read through it and ask questions? I believe, I read in the paper today that Whaley, I think, has a, it said, "public hearing tomorrow night about this."
I think for a moratorium, again, or just to get the public's input generally.
A lot of towns are talking about it, so if you want to go listen to what one of the towns are talking about.
One of the proposals is cross-proposal from the Whaley Industrial Park to the Deerfield Industrial Park.
Oh, yeah, that's for something else in there, yeah, they're going to have sewer connection to Deerfield Sewer.
I think there's actually one of these that...
Well, the newspaper, it said, I got to be careful what you read in the paper.
Yeah, yeah, we have the list and all, but we don't have any of the details.
Right.
All right, so this is what we're going to do, because we're almost out of time.
Yes.
We are on it.
What's our deadline here?
I was speaking loosely, so you are going to...
I will get you draft by this Wednesday, so you'll have a full week between this Wednesday and next Wednesday.
Day after tomorrow, you're awesome. And then we'll look at that, we'll be looking at 105 CMR, and...
That she's going to send out to us, yeah.
I'll send that right away to you tomorrow, so you can get started on that.
That's awesome. And then, and then we meet for a short meeting next Wednesday. I, yeah, I'm going to be leaving a picnic to come to it. I'll bring, I'll bring whatever you guys want, I'll sit right after the table and bring it. I do grace and then leave. So, and then, um... And then we'll move from there, then we'll be on track.
If you're happy with it, and you think it's ready to go to public hearing, you can set your public hearing date and the notice.
I think we're already happy with it, Pat.
And you won't have to get fired for doing something wrong.
And we really want you to be happy, that's what we're all about.
It really is what it's about.
A happy, a happy planning assistant.
Even if it doesn't seem like it sometimes.
Advisor, counselor.
What's that?
She's our advisor.
Don't call me a process queen for nothing.
Oh, dear, process queen.
These little things. And I really, I'm a strong believer in the board having, you know, and we didn't do this now with the site plan, so just having it in front of you, so you see it in black and white and you can think it through.
And this was funny, because this...
Well, I think it works very well.
Good, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last issue of the evening is that the Select Board meeting at that same meeting I was at is trying to revive DEDIC, the Deerfield Economic Development and Industrial Corporation. And they suggested, and I encouraged them, that a planning board member should be on that, and so they would like us to, they would like someone from the planning board to submit a letter of interest as soon as possible.
Why can't we just vote on someone to appoint?
Yeah, like John, he's not here.
John, John.
Bruce.
Apparently, in the past, DEDIC has not had a member of the planning board. And so the Select Board's thinking that it would be a wise thing. So they're asking us to, instead of them picking one of us, they want us to pick one of us amongst ourselves.
They want somebody to step forward.
Yeah.
Right.
So whether we elect it or someone just steps forward, I don't think it matters. What I asked them to do was just say, and I'm not sure if they did this last week, because they had a meeting, to save a place for the planning board member.
Fair enough.
But anyway, if we have someone who wants to be on it. And I think it could be a good time to rotate or to look at all committees and see if people want to get off of some committees and onto others.
How many committees are we on? You're on the sign committee?
No, as a matter of fact.
No, you're on the sign committee.
Paul has been and was removed.
No, you're on the, you're on the...
I volunteered for the sign committee, and I was removed by our past administrator, who appointed Paul.
Who removed you?
I was deleted.
Oh, was this a typo?
So, why don't you be on DEDIC?
I'd be happy to get you back, you want to go back on signage?
I want, you know...
You were the charrette man.
B, is it going to be five Select Board appointees and one person from the planning board, or, you know? I'd be curious about the makeup first.
All right, I don't know. You want to be on it?
Nope.
You want to be on it?
If I wasn't in the past, if I didn't have to be on the sign committee, I would do it.
Sign committee's opening up.
Past DEDIC has been dismissed, or, you know, the Select Board, when I asked why the, we needed the expedited permitting district, and why DEDIC didn't take that over, it was dismissed because DEDIC was a relic from the past and it's being resurrected.
So would DEDIC be part of the EPD?
For whatever reason.
Yeah, I mean, I know very little about DEDIC, it's just that, that it hasn't been very active, so they're trying to resurrect it.
Right.
But I'm definitely...
But it wasn't good enough for the expedited permitting district, is what I'm getting at.
But maybe it would be, it sounds like it's a decent board for that. I mean, it sounds to me...
Right, but that's not, all they're asking for.
Right, but I'm just saying, in terms of our participation...
I'm just curious of its position and its mission.
Yeah. Maybe this resurrected board will help with that.
Right, that's what I'm saying. This is more of a...
You know, I don't think, the Select Board, the way it's comprised right now, I don't believe they're dictating a lot. I think they're taking suggestions from people, so this would be a good time to be on a...
The board's changed.